The December ninth Public Information Session for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. We'll also be opening a school committee meeting, but not until 6:00 PM. The purpose of this is to have a public information session, the first of hopefully many, to talk to everyone about our plans and the work that we have done with the capital planning. Sarah is here with the Chair of our Capital Planning Subcommittee and many members of the Subcommittee and the consultant we've been working with Greg, who I am going to turn this meeting over to. He will give a brief presentation and then we'll open it up for comments. If you are watching via live stream, we are looking at the chat in the live stream. You can post your comments or questions. We'll share them to the committee, to the group and/or to Greg, depending on what your questions are. But hopefully you have them and you'll share, and this is an opportunity to dialogue about this, these study that they've been doing and the next steps. So I will turn it over.
Thank you. I'm Greg Smalley with DRA Architects and we will tonight give you a condensed overview version of the work we've been doing for a few months now with the District in an effort to bring everybody up to speed with the work that's been done. We started with a facilities assessment, which was to had a couple of steps to our couple pieces of that first step. And this was really to develop an understanding of the background of the district and where it was both physically with its facilities, where it was educationally and how it was doing from the point of view of demographics and engagement with people. So in each one of these, you'll see in red text, it's a live link to a, to the entire document that was presented at many stages along the way. So in this first step, we polled the students, parents and teachers to get a, some indication of how the district was perceived by the, the people who were participating in the, in the educational process. And got back a number of positive comments about the, the quality of the staff, the level of engagement, the quality of communication between the district and the, the parents and students. The opinion of the facilities was, was, was positive. We attribute quite a bit of that to the fact that the, there's quite a bit of space in each one of the facilities, which we'll talk about later. And then the quality and offerings of the fields and playgrounds at each one of the schools. The challenges were that the facilities, for the most part, are old, they're outdated, and they are beginning to show their age and challenging some of the educational process. Many of the classrooms are old fashioned, too small or dark, not enough storage in them. And a lot of that is targeted at the high school in particular. Roofing issues at some of the buildings, which the district has been addressing. And bear in mind that our assessment predated some work that the district has been doing on an ongoing basis. Technology was not robust enough. There was no air conditioning, was poor heating and ventilation in many of the buildings. So what that combines to tell us is that the, the indoor environmental quality, the place where people, students and teachers, administrators are day after day, is not of the quality that people have come to expect and quite frankly deserve in a setting where they're going to be all day. We also looked at all of the buildings going through and did an assessment of each one of the buildings and forecast going out what, what the potential maintenance costs would be to simply maintain or preserve what is currently owned in the configuration that it currently is. The last part of that was a demographic and enrollment projection, which was intended to give us an idea of where the district had been population wise and where it might be going over the next 10 to 15 years. The first part that we reported back on was the potential projected costs for the entire districts. This is every building that the district owns, all four of them. And you see that in the immediate future, 2021, we were projecting somewhere about three and a half million dollars of, of work would need to be done. And part of that is starting to plan for the next five years after that. And in that point, we're saying that somewhere north of, or close to $40 million, $35 million would be needed. And when you look out across 10 years, you're talking 40 to 50 million dollars needed to maintain what you own. And as you go out over 20 years, it starts to approach, if not exceed, $65 million. So that's saying that the buildings that you have need some work, which would be typical for a school. It also is saying that there is a, a bit of work that needs to be done simply to preserve the investment in the buildings as they are right now. We followed that with the enrollment forecast and this was confirming what we had been seeing in the trends over the past few years. The enrollment is forecast to decrease by about 10% over the next 10 years, so out to, to 2032. Well, we're anticipating or projecting forecasting a decline of about 150 students. A lot of that is due to the demographics of the town, which is also tending to shrink. And so we're not seeing much on the demographic side that's giving us any hope that the population will start to swing back up. That allows us to start to plan for what the schools may need to be to accommodate a decreasing student population. So we then stepped into the, the second step of this effort, which was to begin to look more at the master planning side and to see what this might be, what the best configuration might be to, to, to help the district own the proper buildings and own the proper sized buildings to best deliver education going out over the next 15, 20, 35 years. We looked at a total of seven or eight different configurations and that ranged from the current configuration of four buildings to three or four different configurations of three buildings and then down to two building alignments. And this would be retaining two of the, just two of the existing buildings, rebuilding one to see how we might best consider that to be done. The committee had landed on grade alignment, what, 2A, which was to take the Hartnett Middle School and move that to a pre K through five building and then to renovate and/or expand or replace the high school. And that would accommodate grades six through 13. This was thought to maximize the use of the existing buildings. It also was providing a good class size for all, both of those grade configurations, the pre K through five and six to 13. Hartnett fits the enrollment very well. There's very, very little space either left over or needed within Hartnett. And the existing high school is actually a little bit too big and was need quite a bit of investment to bring it over to a, a quality and facility that the Massachusetts School Building Authority would participate in. So with that set as a, as a direction to continue the study, we began to look at how the grant program that's available through the Mass School Building Authority may work. And the first step is to issue a statement of interest. And this goes in anywhere between January and April of 2022. And it's just the first step in a program that doesn't obligate the town, District or the MSBA to any type of project. It's simply the town's way of telling that the state that we have some facilities here that do need some work. The state then reviews that application, works with the town to see and get an understanding of what might be needed, how the district is taking care of its buildings to date, how it is delivering education, the success it is having with that education, and then goes on to see how they might be able to help the town to build the proper facilities to deliver education into the future. So with that, we needed some idea of what the cost might be for this configuration. And at this point, the high school would be about 159,000 square feet. And current cost escalation and projections for when this would be built come out to about $615 a square foot. So about a $97.7 million project. With that, it's projected that there would be about a 53, just under $54 million grant participation from the state, bringing the cost to be borne by the towns down to 44 million. And Hartnett, the renovation or modification of the lower level for pre K through one is anticipated or projected to be about 6.8, 6.9 million dollars. We do not anticipate a grant from the MSBA for the Hartnett building. The, their policy is to invest in one project at a time per town or district. And you would pick the bigger of the two projects for, for that, that grant. There are a number of existing MSBA grants and the MSBA reserves the right to, to ask for a portion of that money back. And you see them at the bottom. It was the high school roof, the roof at Millville Elementary, the roof at the complex, the windows and boilers at JFK and the propane conversion over at Millville. Now that remains a point of discussion with the MSBA as we move forward. If the, you are accepted into their program, they will come out and look at these buildings and talk with you and your administration about how to best move forward relative to the future project and these outstanding grants as well. Now, there are the town side of those outstanding grants as well as this potential project moving forward. So there are projecting for Blackstone, the new project would be 42.9, 43 million dollars for Blackstone and about $8 million, 7.8 for Millville. That would be split by the current, we're using right now, the current split of 74.42 and 25.58. And then below that, you see a number of outstanding grants that if, these are the grants we talked about on the previous slide. If the full amount of the outstanding grant was requested back for a claw out of that, that number is shown down below. That would be seen most probably as a grant reduction. So from that, that $53.7 million above, you would take out the money that is shown here if, if the MSBA opts to take all of it back. So for Blackstone, it, it would move the number from 42.9 to 46.7 and from Millville from 7.8 to 9.8. So that is the one area that we can't, can't get much further in until if and when the MSBA invites the town into the, the program. But to keep going in a scenario that can only get better, we use those numbers in a complete reclaim of the outstanding grant amounts. So finally, we projected the impact for $100,000 of assessed value at the current mill rate. And we did this as a level debt projection, which means that the, the, the payment would be very similar for the, over the life of the, of the bond, which in this case is projected to be a 30 year bond. And at this point, Blackstone would be $164.43 for $100,000 of assessed value. And Millville, 181.83. And then below that, just to make sure that everything stays in front of everybody, the chart below it shows the town's side of the previous projects. So even if the state doesn't take their side of the money back, this bottom chart shows money that is still owed by the towns for each one of those projects. So that is currently projects that you're making payments on. The regional middle school at the top is the building we're sitting in and that loan is retired in about two and a, two and a half years, three years. So 2025, that, that, that one would come off of that, that payment schedule. So the recap, the course notes version is on the handout page. We conducted the building assessment, felt that Millville and the complex and Hartnett are in good, mostly good condition. The high school is in fair condition. And the projected cost just to maintain over the next 20 years between 45 and 60 million dollars. Completed the enrollment projection, enrollment is projected to drop over the next 10 years, as it has dropped over the past 10 years. And we looked at realigning the building uses, explored some configurations. And though we looked at keeping all the buildings and maintaining the district as it is currently configured, it was felt by the, the consultants and the facility Subcommittee that that would eventually get into a, a point of a fiscal burden of owning too much building and running too much building for the number of students and staff that were needed. We projected out those costs and as a potential schedule going forward, I stated the SOI would go in between January and April of 2022. The handout says 2021 and we don't want to relive 2021, so make that 2022. There would be a town vote for feasibility study. If you are accepted into the MSBA program and decide that you want to work with them, you would be voting to fund your share of the feasibility study within 270 days of that acceptance. Feasibility study probably six to 12 months. And then a town vote for construction funding would follow completion of the feasibility study. So with that, Madam Chairman, I will turn this back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. At this point, I will open this up to anyone who is in the audience or might be walking at home or any school committee members who have any questions or comments or the meeting is, is open. Yes. Preferably because that will help the people who are trying to listen at home. Thanks.
Brian Scannell, Blackstone. Just had a quick question about the feasibility study. So we vote for the feasibility, feasibility study to commence. And then afterwards, if the towns don't vote to go forward, they lose out on that feasibility study money, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But if they do want to go forward, that gets rolled into the costs of the project?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other question about the feasibility study was if the MSBA comes back and says, you know, has a different configuration or has a different plan that you guys mapped out here, is that something that is set in stone? We basically have to go with what they say? Or can we work with them to find?
No, they, they will accept, if they accept you and it will be on the plan that you're going forward with. So the alignment will be what they will buy into. What they will ask you and mandate you to do is to study renovating the building, replacing the building or partially renovating and adding on to the building. So once you're accepted in, their concern is more on appropriate use of money and development of appropriate educational configurations or buildings. The great alignment comes through on the Department of Elementary and Special Ed side of their review. So once they, once they're through and it's accepted, then you'll be building to the alignment that the, the MSBA brought into.
Okay. So I've gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, please go forward.
That's Silverstein, Blackstone Finance Committee. The tax burden for this proposed project, there's an annual figure given. How long would that tax burden continue? Is it a 20 year or 30 year?
It's actually in the
Yeah, that's calculated over 30 years.
Okay. So that's 30 years. Okay. All right. And the other question that I have for you is if, if you were to to convert this building to a high school, middle school, how much would it cost to renovate, to, to meet state standards? To do that as opposed to building a new high school? Or doing a major renovation to the high school? Do you have any idea? In other words, you're, you're basically, this plan calls for almost $7 million worth of renovations to convert to an elementary school. But how much would it cost, since it was already designed to be a middle school? What would the cost be to convert it to a combined mill and high school? Would it be substantially more than what's here already?
It would, it would be a, a different project. I don't know that it would be more. You wouldn't so much be converting this building upwards. It, it can't really accommodate that. You would be adding to it.
Okay.
And you would be repurposing some of the classrooms to high school level classes. What works against us on that is part of the concept of a middle school, high school is the ability to separate middle school grades from the high school grades and have them overlap only where curriculum really supports that spread of ages. If we have high school students come over onto the existing Hartnett, we're introducing high school kids into what could, for sake of this discussion, be the middle school side of the building. So we would either be, we, in effect, the way to think about that one is you're going to build the core elements of a high school next to this building with a certain number of classrooms. So you'll build the auditorium, another gymnasium, science labs, all the tech areas. And then you would take some of the classrooms from Hartnett as a middle school and make them a high school. So the idea of running that building from an administration point of view gets to be difficult. And the idea of having the high school have to mix with the middle school was seen from an educational and a student growth point of view, not optimal. The other part of building this into a high school is we don't have enough land for the fields that would be required. So we would still be investing outside of this site to get the fields at the right level. So the state would participate in one, one project. Let's say they participate here. The town, the districts would bear the full burden of bringing the fields up to speed and then maintaining locker rooms and all the other ancillary pieces that go with the athletic program, most probably over at the existing high school site.
Okay. Two, I just wanted to point out two things. So if, for instance, we pursued that, that alignment and consolidated the elementary schools at JFK, you would save the $2 million that might be cut off of that, the grant, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other part of that would be the, you wouldn't have to add an awful lot of space to that building. You have a substantial amount of renovation that you would have to do to make it, to consolidate the two elementary school populations. But you have almost as much space in that site as you need right now. So if you said, well, let's consolidate the elementary schools and we know that that's probably going to be the most capital intensive project. I guess as, as a finance committee member, I would like to see that alignment and the costs that would be associated with that alignment of buildings and see what that would cost overall. And I think it would be worthwhile to do that exploration. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so Jeff, if I'm hearing you correctly, for those, you can, you can, but if I'm hearing you correctly, you, you're, you would like to see a cost for this being the, the middle high school and JFK being the K, pre K through five.
Right.
But we, we looked at JFK as pre K through five in our group.
Test fit.
And the test fit didn't right fit. And the, I mean, we didn't go to prices because we, we chucked out that. I don't know what's the right word. I don't
It doesn't have the facilities. Madam Chair, is that we, we stopped at, we stopped looking at the complex, but we, as a part of a three school system because we felt that Hartnett becoming a middle school, high school would not pan out from a financial and administrative point of view. And the complex would need more investment than might be warranted to make that the entire pre K through five.
Right.
So we, we've never had those two buildings in a two school alignment.
Right.
We certainly go back and look at all the data that was gathered up and, and, and compute what might be needed for, to, to directly answer the question, which may be a, certainly a fair question. And, but I think what we should all agree to do is if we're going to do that, we need to answer every part of the field and athletic need, which would in essence move it back to a three site solution. Unless you want to look at acquiring land surrounding this parcel, which is something we had not talked about doing as part of our effort.
Yes, because, because knowing that the MSBA School Building Authority looks to one project. We put eggs in a basket for one project being the high school because of the facilities and the, the benefits that are, were there, the auditorium, the large size cafeteria. We won't, we won't get some of those larger sized facilities in a new building, given the numbers of people we have in the district right now.
That's correct.
So if we wanted to consolidate the middle and high school here, the, well, the building of an auditorium would be significantly different than the auditorium that currently exists at the high school. There would be a second gym, if that would be allowed. But that, we would lose some of the benefits that we have, that we believe we can save in the building that we have. Now, the feasibility study would, would talk to that. And somebody, I wasn't at every meeting, so but, and then the significant, so you couldn't re, in an MSBA project, you couldn't remodel this and remodel, model or redesign, reconfigure JFK AFM. Can't do, you couldn't do both. So one of those projects, the town would bear. So I think what you're saying is you think it would be less than the 6.5 million that it would take to just refit this to K through five?
I think if you looked at the total cost of, of the alignment that I'm, that I'm just suggesting, I think it could very well turn out to be significantly less than the alignment you propose so far. I don't know that. I, I just think it's worth exploring. And putting some numbers there. Another thing I want to point out was the constraints on this site as a high school with the space for, the space for athletic facilities. There are, I think, surrounding contiguous pieces of land that may or may not be available for purchase that might solve that problem. I don't know that either. But I looked, I took a quick look at the map of surrounding properties and there may be parcels of land that are essentially empty right now or unused that could be purchased and developed so that we have enough land to do what we want to do as, as a high school.
It's a fair question. I, I think it, it bears a little bit more exploration. The, the site does slope off westwards. And we would lose quite a bit of the site that's immediately out here just for parking.
Yeah.
So your parking is going to push that way or north. But we had, we had looked at the properties and looked at the topography and we can certainly go back and, and look at that in light of the potential of offsetting what's potentially $2.7 million that MSBA may claw back from grants to the complex previously. Because we'd be looking at both the JFK and AFM grants potentially. But if you abandon the high school completely, I would say that you will most probably be asked to give back that 1.3 that's outstanding on the high school roof.
Mary. So a bit of a clarification. Matt, you can help me here. The district owns the high school and this school, Hartnett. If we renovate JFK, Blackstone owns that and owns the bill.
Correct.
So it's beneficial to Blackstone to work with these two schools where we'd have a shared contribution. So Millville owns Millville Elementary, Blackstone owns the complex and the district owns both these.
Correct.
Just a clarification. Thank you.
Mary, to your, to your point, that was also some of the conversations that we had at the Subcommittee meetings was trying to look at everything from an equitable standpoint as well, treating the towns with that perspective. And when we were deciding to stick to addressing the conditions at the regional sites, the thought was, well, we can address the conditions here, which is regional, at the high school, which is regional. And then with work with the towns, we might be able to return each of the buildings to the towns. So they would be in similar situations. Similarly, to, to Similarly, to, to, um, your point, if there's clawbacks on the grants, those are owned by the towns that the grants were applied to, to their buildings. So if we were to use JFK, but turn back Millville, then Millville would be entirely responsible for the difference in the grant that came off of, um, Millville Elementary School versus if there's some outstanding grants on the JFK complex and there's some outstanding grants on the Millville Elementary School, it's certainly more equitable from a, a payment perspective between the two towns.
So there is a, uh, question on the, or a comment on the chat. Wouldn't the feasibility, and I, I need x-ray vision, I don't know, so I apologize here, but wouldn't the feasibility study evaluating the current middle school as a high school and, uh, middle school, uh, the request would be for a feasibility study for a middle high school and at the option, and all options would be considered, but so, so if we put in a statement of interest to, to essentially renovate, build whatever, the, to focus on the high school, to become a high school, middle school, when the state comes out, they look at what we're proposing or what we think we're proposing, but the feasibility study looks at just the options with the high school, not this building, correct?
Hmm, it, it could stretch, the, since you have to look at potential options, it, the SOI needs to focus on a building.
Right.
So you focus on the high school.
High school.
And how you might align that high school. Then the feasibility study requires you to look at replacement. And replacement could be adding to this building.
Okay.
Um, or replacement could be a new building on a new piece of land. Or it could be renovating that building, or it could be part, renovating part of it and adding to it. But you will, at the very least, have to acknowledge that there are other options, however feasible or unfeasible those options may be. But you need to go in and with a particular building identified.
Does that help? We'll see. We'll see. Anyone else? Yes, please, Mr. Watson.
James Watson, the Blackstone, uh, Financial Committee. Uh, I must admit that I have some fairly steep reservations as to the process that has gone forward to this point. Uh, part of the studies involve the Millville Regional, uh, Elementary School. If Millville, I'm, here rumors that that facility would go to the town uh, for a municipal building. That is fine by me if it's fine with the people of Millville, that they're not going to have their elementary school in the town. Uh, the students that are in the Millville Elementary School now would quite apparently be able to be accommodated in the complex elementary school and cure the enrollment problems and the density of the students there. It would also save the, uh, Regional School District, the cost of upkeep and maintenance of that facility. And that would be a relatively simple change to it. The complex, I think you are under evaluating what it's worth to you. It is completely on one level. You have on the studies that the engineer has done, these pictures of doors coming out to a little piece of concrete with no path that meets the requirements. But you don't hear anything at all about getting handicapped children out of a three story building in the case of a fire. Because every time I go in an elevator, they're saying, don't use it if there's a fire. I think that one story building that you already have with facilities down in the base, at, on the first floor level for the kindergarten and pre-kindergarten children to use the bathrooms that are always already there. Rather than spending six or seven million dollars to tear up the ground floor of this building and to make bathroom facilities for the little children down there. I think that would make a lot more sense. It probably could be done within, without involving the, uh, state building authorities to any real extent. Okay. The, I think that the main problem with the complex is I think it has a problem with the septic systems. And that is what is causing the high water table. That's what's causing the mold under the rugs. That is why you had to pump the whole system out this fall. Okay. What I would like to have brought up is instead of sending that $6 million to put bathrooms in this facility, to have Blackstone take a look at the cost of extending the sewer system up to the complex. And to do it with municipal financing outside the scope of the Regional School District. I suspect, having been in town for a while, there may be other septic systems. The soil does not end on the project, the, the complex grounds. That putting that sewer system in, it's at least worthy of the study to go forward with it. Okay? The other, one other thing that I am concerned with are these projections for the enrollment staying the same or falling. Okay, I've been in real estate for 50 years and I've watched the Boston metropolitan area expand out. Okay, the growth of the last couple have been adversely affected by COVID. Some of the projections and some of the numbers that are involved come, uh, from old numbers. I don't know if anybody here has gone and looked at the Blackstone Municipal Plan, Master Plan, which shows that while the growth rate and population down here has been rather slow, a few miles farther to the north on the line between Boston and Worcester, that has been substantially higher. You're dealing with five years of projection before you even get this high school change to have be built, and that's on an optimistic timeframe. And then you're projecting for 20 years or to 30 years after that. It's very, very real. Be very, very careful on your projections that in five to seven years, you're not coming back to build more schools to take care of the higher student enrollment. The very real possibility, when you take these projections and you throw them out for 10 years, it can change deliberate quite a bit. Uh, the plan of the study of the buildings, I found very good in terms of letting me on the outside of the buildings find out what was going on there. Okay, it just received, I don't know who sent it to me from the, uh, Regional School District. Okay, that was essentially the, uh, uh, draft plan reprinted. Okay, it was not the final plan.
Was the final plan that you were provided.
Well, then it still has the problem saying that the high school roof, I've got it right here. I'll talk with you afterwards. Okay? It's not there. It's the same plan. It's been reprinted. It's not double sided printed anymore. It looks twice as thick. But it's the same plan. I spent an hour and a half looking at it and comparing page to page. It's the same plan. Okay, uh, in the plan that he, the, all the slides that were done, you do have the balance due on all the existing schools. Okay, that is essentially what I consider to be the on budget financing situation of the town. I don't know if they even told you about the deficits that they have funding their OPEB system. Okay, that is probably two or three times their debt. The offline debt is far bigger than the bonded debt. Okay, now, it does affect the town abilities of the town to do stuff. Uh,
Just to be clear, Mr. Watson, uh, the OPEB is not a debt. It's, it's an un, it's an unrealized liability.
It's a realized liability, it's unfunded.
Okay, but it's also not the reason we're here for the information.
Not the reason we.
And it does have impacts on the community. I, I clearly understand that. We're going to try to stick to the topic of the, of the proposal and the information.
My comments to you is simple. Okay, the financial situation, the reason that bonded debt is in the project paperwork is to show the abilities of the school districts and the towns to afford it. Okay? I don't think it is truly honest.
With all due respect, it's not shown, it's not put there to show whether or not you could afford it. It's put there to show the possible permutations of the funding for this project. There will be a discussion, many discussions about the town's ability to afford it.
That is true.
That's a different discussion than where we are tonight.
Oh, well, if we're not discussing the abilities of the towns to afford it, that is certainly a shortcoming of this meeting.
No, that's the, this meeting is the first step in many meetings, as the chairwoman said when she opened the meeting. No town goes into a hundred million dollar project on a single meeting. And I look forward to meeting with you a number of times to make sure that everyone understands the financial ability of the two towns to support the district. We won't, we won't solve it tonight because I won't understand everything you know in one night. And you won't understand everything I know in one night.
That is completely true.
Okay.
But, okay, you are initiating a project. Okay, with this letter of intent.
No, sir. No, we are not. No, we are not. Now, I need to stop you on that one because that cannot get out into the community.
Oh, can't, we can't have things go out into the community?
The way you said it, cannot go into the community. This submitting, submitting a statement of interest is the district telling the state, we want to bring the state into this discussion with us. It's not starting a project. It's not making a financial obligation. The state may very well say, we're not interested. We have towns that need more help.
If the state says they are interested.
That's good.
And they want you to go forward with the project that you have more or less already explained to the people, that they're going to make this into one school district, one, all the elementary schools and the high school into another. What are your abilities to back out and to change it to something else?
All the way up through that 270 day period, the town can simply say, we're done. We don't want, the district can say, we don't want to participate anymore. That 270 day period is the time to continue this discussion between the school committee, the facility subcommittee, your finance committees, to continue that discussion to see, is there a better way to do this? But someone has to go first.
Right.
And the finance subcommittee went first.
And so I, I want to, because that, the same kinds of questions are coming up on the chat. Um, this proposal project, the scope that, uh, Mr. Watson is talking about is available on the school district website. It does capital planning. If you click on it, um, if the PowerPoint is not there, it will be there after tonight, but the reports are there and they're all clickable links. So you can link right into, uh, the report, um, that is, has been talked about this evening. And this is bringing the capital planning committee together was step one. That, this is information session one. What, what happens tonight, what happens as we move forward is the beginning of the process. It seems like it began two years ago. For Sarah, it probably feels like it began a lifetime ago, but, um, this is the beginning of the process. This is where we've, we've done some studies, we've done some look, you know, to, to do nothing, to not move forward on this project, there's still some capital needs within the district. There's still 65 million dollars over, you know, ten, the next 10, 15, 20 years. So there's still a great, great need within this district to look at facilities. So step number one was to say, well, what are all of our options? And as a, a committee with some consultants who did some demographic background check and they, they checked what was available to them. They checked with town records. They checked with what was available to them and with lots of discussion. This committee has met a couple of times a month over the last six to eight months. I don't know what.
And it was school committee, town representatives.
Um, to, to come up with the best plan that they can think of. We're having those discussions to see what other things the community might think of. We are not asking anyone to commit to tax dollars today or anything else today. We're saying the school needs to look at its facilities. This is a way that we are proposing to do it so we can get some help in that, which is the state support help. And if we bring the state in and the state says, you know what, you do have a need there, let's take a look at it. The town has some time, the towns, and, and then it is a town decision, not a school committee decision. It is a town decision at a town meeting, two towns. Blackstone members will get to decide, Millville members will get to decide, and it's just like other things we've done. If one town says no and the other says yes, it's still no. There's no like third, there, and there's no super town meeting. Super town meeting is only coming with budget. Um, and so there's no, if it's yay or nay, it's nay. If it's yay yay, it's yay. If it's nay nay, it's nay. The process remains with the towns.
Obviously, to fund it, you've got to go back and get votes from the towns to come up with the money.
Correct.
That is obvious. Nobody disagrees with that. What I am concerned about is that the school committee and even your consultants have not really looked at all the opportunities that are involved. I am concerned in the planning and of the facilities review. There is a good amount of work done on what it costs to tear down good schools and replace them, move them over to another use. Okay? I don't see any detailed study on the part of your consultant to see that you are going to, uh, how you would go forward to try to minimize the expense of the repairs to the schools to keep any project from going. To keep any project from going over thirty percent, so you don't have to bring everything up to current code. Current code is great when you're going to build from ground floor. It's not necessarily the best cost effective way of refinishing an existing building because you've got to tear it partly down to put the new stuff in.
Madam Chairwoman, may I ask, can I just ask a question for clarification?
Certainly, ma'am.
And I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. Do you think it would be better for the towns to try to do remodel projects that leaves, that require less than thirty percent of the building to be remodeled? Because it's cheaper than to try to make sure we have schools that are safe, handicap accessible?
I understand what I am saying.
That's why I'm asking for clarification, sir.
What I am saying is, I would like that question to be studied. Okay, so that we can look and see whether or not the major projects, so let's say the high school, can be done far cheaper than tearing a good half of it down.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to Tammy, and, but before we do that, Tammy, I'm gonna officially open up the school committee meeting. Uh, because we needed to do that at six o'clock, and we're way beyond that, and, but I am going to put it on pause. Because I will continue this discussion, but not for the entire evening. We will have more of these. It's the first of hopefully many discussions that we're going to have in the community, uh, but Tammy.
So I, I just want to say that I, I thank you to the subcommittee that did this work. There were many options that were discussed. I'm fogging myself up, sorry. Um, there were many options that were discussed, and like many of the things that we do as a school committee. It goes far beyond the numbers. It, this committee, the subcommittee, considered the learning value. To Mr. Cantalouge's point, the, the safety, all of those things sometimes doesn't equal what the price, like when you look at the price, when you talk about safety, that is priceless. And getting our, you know, as a school committee, our job is to look at learning and how learning can be best done. And unfortunately, many of our buildings are not where they need to be for technology, for learning. And so all, the, the subcommittee considered all of those pieces. They considered many variations of different buildings and different grades and, and all of that. And it, it's not, um, it has to go beyond. You, you have to look at the value of what you're talking about in the learning and the safety. And, and also the, just, we, we talk about school choice all the time and how that is what bringing our numbers down. Part of it is because the high school looks like it does, quite honestly. When you have some other district that has bells and whistles in this great high school with great technology. That's part of why we're, we're losing people. Not because we don't have quality education with quality teachers. I had a a child graduate from here and another, uh, school. Both of them are doing great in college. We have a great education here, but for many parents, it's the, it's the shiny. It's the shiny building, quite honestly. So I, I think we have to kind of think about this project in all of those components, the safety, the learning, and of course, the price tag. We always talk about the price tag, but it has to be the full package of what we're talking about. And I think that the subcommittee that worked on this project did that amazingly well. They, they considered lots of things, and I, I think when you look through the, the slides and you look through the variations of what was discussed. Knowing the details behind that helps you understand why that the choice of what was brought forward tonight was the choice. So I think you have to take time to look at those details beyond the price tag.
And there were, and, and, and to be clear to the people watching, what we are talking about now is and what the committee has done as its work, and the report that you will see and can link to on the website is not the feasibility study. That is not, we have not reached that stage yet. That requires financial commitment from both of the communities. This was a capital review of our facilities that brought together a capital planning to, committee to say, how do we best move forward given the current conditions of all of our schools in the district? So given the current condition of all of our schools in the district, given the educational opportunities we want the children in this district to have, and the way education is working in the, in this decade and century and moving forward, and the look of more project based education versus assessment based education, and, and moving the, the blueprint forward. We've been talking about the blueprint for years. Moving that all forward, what made sense? So the committee in its study, and, and the committee was, had representation from community members, from finance committee members, from board of selectmen members. Everyone was invited to participate. They're open meetings. Anybody is welcome to come to them. Um, or, or read the minutes from them, or we've had reports at the school committee. We will continue to do that as we move through the process. This is not the feasibility study. This is the study of where are our buildings now, what are educational needs, what are our towns look like? What is our best foot forward to give the students in Blackstone and Millville the best opportunity to succeed, to support the towns that we live in, in future generations? They're our future generation, and they, and many of them return to live in our communities. And so we, the committee looked and struggled and argued, and, um, you know, some of us thought that the proposal that we're presenting as, as what seems to be kind of financially the best package to move forward, some of us thought that was nuts, just nuts.
Um, but as you dive in.
I don't think any of us went into it.
No, not a single one.
This being the plan. Like, it was a long process that started with education. What we want, what we, well, not even what we want, what we need.
What we need for our students.
Right.
That was the anchor.
We looked at what we have and what those buildings are going to need. And what, I mean, it was very complex, and the demographic piece, the study is a piece of it. But it was a long and involved process, and the implication that we haven't explored options. I'm just gonna say it's not true.
Right.
Um, there might be other possibilities out there that weren't examined, but there were reasons behind it. Um, our athletic fields are something that people have said were a benefit. And it's not cheap to build new athletic facilities. And there's the question of MSBA involvement in that. Our auditorium could probably use some new seat covers, I'll say, but like, it's actually very well sized. And won't, that, we will not get that from the MSBA. Like, it's just, it's so multifaceted. And, and I guess that sounds like rhetoric, but like this was the plan that the committee agreed is the best direction to present for our statement of interest. And, and I want to reinforce this piece. The statement of interest, we've done one, we've done them before, and we ju, like, not we, but the school committee has submitted statements of interest before. We filled it out, turned it in, and got rejected. Okay, we're trying to do it right. We're trying, we're being transparent. We're seeking involvement. We're getting help from experts in the field. That's what this is. We're trying to do it right as opposed to what we did in the past, or what committees did in the past. So if the committee decides to submit the statement of interest, there is no financial obligation. It goes to the state. If the state says, yes, we're interested in participating with you, there's still no obligation. We don't have to go forward with the feasibility study. The towns don't have to go forward with the feasibility study. It all has to go through a process. This is the beginning.
Yeah, and, and I have heard in the community, and I'm seeing it on the, the live stream tonight, that that the district has not maintained its buildings. The district has maintained its building as far as the town and the budgets allow. Um, our buildings are, are very clean, our custodial ta, staff takes incredible pride in the buildings that they have. And the plain fact of the matter is that there are some things that don't meet code. There are some things that, that haven't been able to be repaired because the price tag for the communities was too high. But, but this is a town, it, it, it feels as if people want to make this a school committee versus town. These are town questions. These are town decisions. The school committee has studied what's in front of us. We've invited people into the process. And we believe, we haven't even decided to put in a statement of interest yet, but we believe that that's the best course of action. That's why we're having these informational sessions to see if you all believe that that's the best course of action. If that's not the best course of action, then the course of action becomes, how do we make those repairs that the capital? How do we build in sixty five million dollars to repair, maintain, and, and update our buildings? Because we can't just do enough. We have students who will be coming into our high school who need it to be handicap accessible. We've had some in the past. And they have made do. We don't live in a, a society anymore where people are willing to make do. And so we will have great expense coming forward. What's the best way to handle that? People are still asking, where's the report? It's right on the front page of the website, the bottom bullet on the bottom button. Purple line.
It's titled future, uh, for, for future potential facility plans.
There you go. Um, and again.
Right there.
Capital planning committee meetings, and once we do go in, um, if the committee decides to create a statement of interest. They, then, and, and that is accepted. There'll be lots more meetings and different kinds of meeting. And a whole different committee, part of the school committee. And, and new capital planning groups, but, uh, the work, this, the, it's may feel to some like we're trying to say this is the end stage. This is not even the beginning. There.
Thank you. So as part of that committee, and Sarah chaired it, we all worked very hard and gave up many nights and many hours. You guys left your family to come to these meetings and work with us. We did, as Sarah said, look at multiple options. We started with about six. This wasn't one of them. This evolved to this. So and Sarah's point to the fields, the Masco Building Authority has a prescriptive reimbursement. And they only pay for eighteen percent of site work. So you're not getting any fields. We built fields up here. They're all on us. The fields that we have, we can keep. So the real reason I came up here is I take exception to the thirty percent dancing rule. As a professional project manager that has built many schools in this municipality. I will not support the game of, well, if we only do this much, we don't have to add sprinklers. Or we don't have to improve the fire suppression to today's standards. Or we don't have to add that extra egress because now you have to be within seventy five feet. These rules have changed over time. By example, anytime there's a tragedy, they improve the rules, improve the security. The JFK complex is currently not accessible. The bathrooms are not in code. So that's my, I will I will not support that game in any municipality.
And Mrs. Williams, tell us more about the failed, oh, failed statement of interest. Oh, I, we don't need Mrs. Williams to tell you that. I will tell you that, um, when we did the roof projects and then before we did the boiler projects. We put three, three years in a row, we put a statement of interest into MSBA for a major renovation for the high school. Three years in a row it was declined. So that was back before you were on the committee?
I think I was here for the last one.
We got the last no thanks letter.
Your first year.
My first July.
Yeah.
Because I said, oh, what's this? I think I might have been here for the.
Yeah.
It was that first.
Four or five years ago, we did it for three years in a row. Um, and again.
Can you hear me, Jane?
Yes, Sarah.
Hi. So I'll just add to that. The last time, the, the previous times that we submitted. We did not have any of this work to back up the need. This, working with DRA, um, this is, this is a big step for us to have, I don't want to say the proof that we, we've done the legwork and that we have um, the studies on each building on what is needed to keep them maintained. So hopefully that puts us in a different, um, bucket with MSBA this time around if we are submitting the statement of interest.
Thank you. Name, yes. I did. Yep, I'm good. We're good. It's postponed. It's on hold.
Thank you.
So we got this handout tonight. It's roughly about ten slides. This was what we were given last week. Why, why the difference in the
Timing.
Okay.
So that's available on the website.
Okay.
Yep.
So my question is on slide eighteen versus slide four here. It looked like, and maybe I'm wrong, so it's so hard to read. But the ten year projection for the district was a decrease in enrollment of thirty two point eight percent. But if I calculate this right, this slide's saying that there's going to be a decrease in enrollment, maybe I'm wrong with this, of ten percent. What's the variation?
Variation, that, that's the, um, district overall. I believe this was just one grade configuration. We, we can look at, at this. It's a, um, we talked about this at the, at the last meeting. And we probably need to tease out from here. It's one one age group is declining faster. So them declining at thirty two percent gets all of you down by ten percent.
Because this is somewhat confusing.
Yes.
You would agree, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Now, you pointed that out at the last meeting, and we, we should tease that out and make sure that those two don't need an explanation because that, that's simply number projections.
Right, well, I pointed it out because this said thirty two point eight percent.
Yep.
And then I get a slide tonight that says the decrease in enrollment is only ten percent. I think to the public, I think that for you guys, that's kind of a big thing because if the public's looking at a thirty two percent decrease in enrollment in the next ten years. Why do they want to make this financial investment versus a ten percent? So I just.
Yes.
But to be, to be fair. To, to be fair to everybody, if you go back on last week's presentation to slides thirteen and fourteen, they are slide eight or slide four tonight. And slide eighteen is talking about enrollment in a particular school to a particular grade alignment. Okay, so it's a much more granular look at the enrollments. So last week we talked a little bit more about overall, um, demographics and enrollments. We condensed that down to the salient points on slide four, but it is slides thirteen. It might even be slide twelve, but it's, um, yeah, it's slide thirteen, fourteen from last week. And slide thirteen is slide four from tonight. And then what you were looking at is when we started to look at and analyze particular grade alignments, you're looking at, um, grade level. Alignment. So you, it's a good point because this stuff has to be able to be understood on its own when it goes out there. So we need to tie this slide to these slides so that people can, can get that point.
So, because when somebody's looking at this packet from last week, and then they get over to this slide over here, it's somewhat confusing. You know, it contradicts versus.
It doesn't contradict.
Well, they don't contradict.
Maybe the word, we're on words.
Okay.
The subgroup of.
Yeah, one, one goes further. Last week went further because we had the whole night.
Right.
And we had more time, and that was really the, last week, the intention was to bring the the, the over, a much broader overview forward to start to engender this type of conversation over and over again. So that, as this goes along and we keep having these conversations. Everybody starts to understand what these poor souls went through for sixteen months and get a deeper understanding of the, whatever aspect they're interested in. What's happening with enrollment, what's happening with the buildings, what can we do financially? It's, there, there are all these different pieces that people are interested in. We have that data. We need to just keep restating it so that people can understand it on their own. So I appreciate that point and, and we'll, uh, we'll make a, a note to, to tie those two together a bit more closely.
I mean, the complex, um, was pre K through five up until, you know, we added the addition in nineteen eighty six. We're the highest, you know, student population at that time. And now we're kind of looking. And now we're kind of looking, we just spent, what, six months to eight months reconfiguring to send all the students to Millville. And, you know, we did traffic plans and everything else. That was quite a feat. And now we're asking to bring all the students back to Blackstone. So, you know, that's some of the questions that are floating out there. So that's some issues that you guys as a district might want to discuss. Because, you know, you're trying to, you know, we just spent, well, like I said, the last six to eight months moving the students from Blackstone to Millville. And now we want to bring them back. So that's some of the stuff that we're hearing out on the street. So something.
I do appreciate that. Um, as people are hearing more, sharing more. Like, we do invite you, all of the school committee members' emails are available on the website. And please do reach out with questions. And, you know, just to be clear. When we're talking about this proposal and the idea of submitting a statement of interest and then the idea of submitting. To have, if, if accepted, and that's a big if, if accepted, to commit to a feasibility study. If a feasibility is study is uh, proposed, then to commit to the, an actual plan that comes out of as a result of that, which. Then finally ties the, I mean, you're not looking at next year. So the, the rea- the regional agreement changes that brought uh, the elementary schools to be a unified school district. In education purposes, um, is still going to continue in that way for, for years, for years. Before any of these changes would, would or could come to fruition if, if they're even feasible.
The statement of interest gets submitted April.
Yep.
At what point? Do we get an answer back?
Two hundred and seventy days.
They have.
From acceptance, two hundred and seventy days for the towns to schedule special town meetings. Or if they have a meeting coming up to use those town meetings.
We'll get an answer from MSBA if we're accepted in.
What?
By July.
Yeah, we usually get that answer in like July.
Yeah, but July.
Thereabouts.
Yeah.
And then there's two hundred and seventy days, as James.
Two hundred and seventy from that point. So I just trying to clear, narrow that piece down so we have an understanding. Because at that point, we're going to ask the towns to go out and spend five to seven hundred, I think we talked about last week, for that feasibility study. So, you know, at that point. We're, it won't tie into an election, so we're going to have to have special elections at that point to see if the towns will do it. So just so we have a clarification out there as to what the timeline's going to be. You know, and people can realistically know this. So, you know, we have to label to submit. Before months roughly, approximate, somewhere in there. And then at that point, we'd be on the clock to see what we want to do at that point.
To commit to feasibility, after feasibility, we're. Move to the next stage to, to vote again. I mean, there's several, this is not a one and done voting process either. Several, right, right, right?
Two.
Two, two.
Two.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate your time.
Right. Okay. Are we good? Uh, yeah, Brian.
I'll be very.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify some, on something, cause I asked last Thursday about the um, statement of interest. If we submit that and they say no, I believe the answer was, well, they'll take you the next year.
They, you can, you can resubmit it.
Okay.
And typically, if you're, if you're turned down, you can ask why. And we know why on the previous three submissions, it lacked the necessary background material. That was, that was pretty obvious. But if you turn down, i- if you submit it and you're turned down. Um, they're pretty good at a debrief. They'll, they'll tell you, and they may just come back and say there were districts that just needed it more than you did. Based on the money that was available.
So is there a possibility we're turned down and turned down the next year and turned down the next year? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, then you just keep, you keep refining it and putting it in. But the, it's typically two, three tries and you're either going back and rethinking your facilities plan and your strategic plan and your master plan. Or you're uh, you're being told you're just not going to qualify. And I can't see that with the buildings that you have here and the need that you have. So it's really a matter of um. Getting all the pieces in play, which you're, you're now very far along. And then opting to just, to submit it and um, and follow it through.
Okay, thank you.
The question, how many acres of land will be required if we build a new school for the high school? We, we aren't proposing building a whole new school um, in our, in our statement, but. I assume that would come out in the feasibility statement.
A good, a good rule of thumb is um, use twenty acres as a base and a hundred acres for every student, for every hundred students. So if you did one acre per hundred students with eight hundred student enrollment, it'd be twenty-eight acres would be the basis of what you would start looking for.
Twenty-eight acres. All right. On that note, I am going to adjourn the public information session. Again, we will schedule more. We will do our best to get them out. One of the comments in here was that, why didn't more people know about this meeting? Um, we do the best we can to get information out. We're limited in the way that we can do so. So we'll take anybody's voices and anybody's help. If you hear of something. Post it around to your neighbors and your friends and your colleagues and, and anyone else, but um.
And we did, Jane, we did email to every parent, family, Twitter, Facebook, webpage. But we can, we're happy to put it somewhere else, anywhere else, but we did, we did put it on.
Yeah, any, any, but we will do others um, before the school committee decides whether or not to. Submit a statement of interest uh, in the new year. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for coming. Nice to have. So I did call our meeting to order, um, but we will officially still say the pledge. So if you join me. Pledge allegiance to the.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I thank you to the people that did join us, whether uh, online or in person. Um, I will tell you that the commenting section, we, of the live stream, if you're still chatting. Will not be responding to those chats. If there's something you'd like to say um, during the public forum portion of the meeting. Uh, we certainly will look to the chat and see if there's anything that, that people want to, you can put it in there now. But we won't be answering questions at this point in time. We are moving into our meeting and we will do an introduction of members and. Jane Reggio, Millville.
Tim Howell, Blackstone.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Patty Sacco, Blackstone.
Matt Aaron, oh, sorry, Aaron.
Aaron Benaco, Millville.
Matt Aaron Worth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Okay. Addison, what's up? Thank you for bearing with us.
So tomorrow is a big day for our high school. We have a lot of things going on. We have the boys varsity's first game, oh, and JB. JB's at five, boys is at six-thirty. We also have the drama co- club performance.
Yeah.
Of Clue at seven. And they have a performance on Saturday too at four. And then the girls had their first basketball game today. And GSA also tomorrow is hosting a movie after school.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
So we had Powder Puff the half day before Thanksgiving. And that went really well. We had a lot of people sign up and participate. Our junior and sophomore team won by two touchdowns, I think. But it was very fun for all, the whole school to get together and see the football boys try and coach our girls. Which they're not good coaches.
Heard that here live.
They don't, they only talk football plays. No one do football plays. And we have our pep rally coming up, the half day before our Christmas, uh, winter break. And that is a really thi- big thing that gets the whole BMR school together. All the grades have their theme and the overall job theme is music genres. So seniors got rock. Juniors, country. Sophomores, holidays.
Holiday music?
That's all you hear right now.
And freshman disco.
Yeah.
So.
They win.
And we'll play a bunch of games together. The week before and that Friday before, we'll have a bunch of, no, the week of and the Friday before. We'll have a bunch of spirit days to get pep rally points and see which grade wins. And we'll also have the teachers dance.
Yes.
Oh, are they practicing a dance?
Oh, no, it's hilarious. No, every year it's the most funniest thing during pep rally. Right, that's pretty much it.
That's it, all right. Any questions for our wonderful ladies? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we received warrants and the minutes from the November eighteenth meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve that as consent agenda item A.
I so move.
Move by Tim, is there a second? Second, second by Amanda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstention? Anybody who wasn't here? Tammy, but she's not here now, so it doesn't matter. Okay, public forum. There is a request that we try to find other ways to communicate with the parts of the community that do not have children in the school district. And again, um, I will comment that that is what we try to do. Our best avenue is social media. We have been putting things in the enlightener um, as best we can for the town of Blackstone. Um, and the town of Millville does not have a communication option that uh, goes out to the public. So we are limited and we would welcome any, any ideas. To improve that communication to the entire um, two towns. But we. Will do our best. So I'll give this a minute. Is there anyone here who has anything for? Public forum. Okay, I want to tell you, this live stream's on a delay and it's very weird to watch myself move after I've moved. Just in case anybody ever wants to.
Do you have the warrants a minute?
I do. Yeah, because we opened it differently. I have them all already. They're right here.
Okay, uh, so hearing nothing and seeing nothing. I, we have as a school committee item, just to follow up on that Capitol subcomplaint, subcommittee. Future facilities plan and the discussion tonight. Um, and, and Matt, I invite you to join us if you have any insights. But does anybody have any insights based on what they, they heard? I'm, from my perspective. I understand the need to explore all options. I think that's important. But I also feel like the committee did that. And while we may be able to get prices for flipping and flapping. I still think our biggest need is the high school and our biggest opportunity is the high school. Go ahead.
My thought, uh, and I, I understand your, your, your comments there perfectly. And, and having listened to members of the Finance Committee from Blackstone. My question is, do we want to throw good money after bad? And what I heard in their questions and have you thought of this? Have you thought of this? Yes, those things have been thought of. And if we go the, go the routes what they're proposing. We're going to be in the same situation in two years, three years, in five years. We're going to lose more students to school choice. The property values are going to decline in Blackstone and Blackstone will still be the two-horse town that people think it is. We need to move forward. We need to do what we've got to do to bring education to the forefront of the community. And improve that part. And property values will increase. People will move to town because of the school system. And Blackstone, Millville together will prosper.
If I can add something. I think as, first of all, as a, as a Millville resident. I, I hope that I speak for many of us that are there in um. You know, the regional agreement makes sure that our kids are going to be educated in the same system. I don't know of any one of my neighbors that even have younger kids that are concerned with the fact that we won't have a school in our town. They're still getting educated and um, by looking at these plans, that tells me they're going to be educated at a state-of-the-art school. And when I look at, regardless, our tax dollars are going to go up. It, it's a fact that nobody comes to the table saying, hey, I want to pay more taxes. But that's what is going to happen. And when I look at the two amounts overall, based on the, the net we're going to have to pay. For a new school and renovation versus upkeep. We're looking at very similar numbers. And I would, I think the future of our town's students are better served. Pay, we're going to pay that amount no matter what. So we might as well put them in newer state-of-the-art schools that will serve them better, that they can be proud of.
Will we not spend?
Plans for continual upkeep of, of those.
Exactly. Will we not spend less in building new facilities and renovating this school? Than we will in maintenance and upkeep of the existing four properties? Again, good money after bad. We have to think wisely about this. As a community.
Anyone else? Any other reactions? Uh, so from a community perspective, we will uh. Schedule another one of these. Um, we heard feedback that um, five-thirty on weekday evenings, it's not always great for people. Uh, I'm not sure we'll ever come up with a time that's great for people, uh, but we will try different times and different venues. And um, it may not be full school committee members. It may be smaller hearing groups, but we will get out into the community. Um, as best we can and hear what folks have to say. But the same is true in the reverse. We invite you to, to reach out to us. We invite you to um, contest and contact us directly. I am willing to meet with people if that's a, a choice of folks or you know that there's a group and you want some of us to come to. A group in your neighborhood or your friends or the library or the senior center. Um, please reach out to us. We are, are willing to do the legwork and it's necessary that we do that, that legwork. But um, social media is not the place to, that will hash this out. We'll do it in person. And we'll try to have as many of these as we can before the school committee makes a decision to. Do a statement of interest. And if a statement of interest is accepted, we'll do a, a million more. To, before it goes to the town for a feasibility study. So we're again, just at the beginning. Anyone else? I will turn this over to Dr. DeFalco, uh, report of the superintendent.
Thanks so much and good evening, everybody. There are quite a few items in my uh, report this evening, but they're, they're quick. There are just some brief updates that I want to run through uh, with the committee and the community. And we're going to start with Karen, if you want to join us. Uh, and just do a brief overview of our. Day COVID numbers.
Uh, while Karen is coming forward, I will tell you that it is a new month. This is our first meeting in December. And we have, uh, we did agree that every month we would review the masking policy. But the, the Department of Ed has not changed its requirements and won't even be looking at it again until January fifteenth, I believe. So our policy remains in effect. Karen, welcome.
Hi, um. So as far as um, the COVID nineteen, November was a horrible month for us. We had, I think it was forty-six cases in November. after we beat the record in October for the most cases ever. We blew right through that in November. We're currently up to a hundred and fifteen cases. Last year for the total for nineteen, no, twenty twenty-one. We had a hundred and twenty-eight cases for the entire year and we're at a hundred and fifteen. So we should hit next year's or last year's total this month.
There's fifteen cases as total for the year so far. It's not currently a hundred and fifteen.
Forty-six active.
There's forty-six.
Well, there are. Yeah, there, there's been a hundred and fifteen cases since the school started this year.
Yeah. Thank you.
So the middle school is leading with forty-four cases. There have been thirty-two at the complex, twenty-two at Millville, one, sixteen for the high school and one that was no school assignment. We've had twelve hundred and thirty-two in-school close contacts. Two hundred and eighty-eight have been doing tests and stay. I'm still waiting to hear from six families from a case this afternoon. There have been eight hundred and seven that are monitoring only. Thirty-nine have been vaccinated, eighty-six have chose quarantine and fourteen have been positive in the past ninety days of them being a close contact. For vaccination rates in Blackstone, the five to eleven group, and these are numbers as of this evening. Two percent of the five to elevens are fully vaccinated. That should be going up as the kids hit their fourteen-day mark. Forty-nine percent of twelve to fifteen, fifty-five percent of sixteen to nineteen. And Blackstone overall is at fifty-seven percent. Millville has three percent, five to eleven, forty-one percent, twelve to fifteen, fifty-nine percent, sixteen to nineteen, and forty, forty-six percent for the town overall. As far as the breakdown by school, the high school is at fifty-five percent, middle school is at thirty-eight percent. The complex is at two percent and Millville's at one percent. We did have a vaccination clinic on the thirtieth. We vaccinated eighty-two children with their first or second dose and twenty-two adults. We had one person that had their first dose and twenty-one had boosters on that day. The next clinic will be on December twenty-first, which will also be first doses, second doses and booster doses. That'll be from one thirty to five at the high school cafeteria.
Today, they just authorized the booster for sixteen-year-olds.
That, that was going to be the next thing that I would.
Karen, can you give that date and time again, the high school for the clinic?
It'll be December twenty-first, one thirty to five P M. in the high school cafeteria. And that is all I have unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Good work. Next, just a quick rundown. Our, I will not do the job that our student reps did. They were fantastic, but just a couple of quick reminders. Tomorrow and Saturday, we do have our play. I can't wait to see it. I'm going tomorrow night. It's going to be great. And so we have that to look forward to this weekend. And then just a couple of quick holiday events we have coming up on Monday, December twentieth. At seven P M. we have in the B, the BMR High School Concert Band and the BMR High School Chorus. Seven P M. on Monday twentieth and then at eight P M. Again, on December twentieth is the BMR High School Wind Ensemble. Then on the twenty-second, December twenty, I'm sorry, December twenty-first. I think those days are wrong. Isn't it Monday the twenty-first?
No, Monday's twenty.
Oh, it is the twentieth. Okay. So I guess I had that wrong. Tuesday, December twenty-first. Six P M. we have here at Hartnett, the sixth-grade band and middle school chorus. Then at six forty-five, seventh-grade band and at seven thirty, the eighth-grade band. And that is on Tuesday, December twenty-first. And those are on our calendar online. And we also put them in the light. So if anybody's interested and you want to double-check the dates and times and make sure that you've got them right, you can check them out there.
Sorry. They're all at the high school, right?
Yes, I think the middle school band is at the high school.
Yeah, they usually are.
All right. It's just a reminder to our high school families that might be tuning in. Remember, we have entered into a consortium with the school districts around Blackstone Valley and have done a lot of work to open up our courses to one another at no cost to our students. And it's known as BV Excel. So if our high school families that are tuning in, you will see in Ms. Falis's weekly updates and memos to students and to families, a little reminder to share with our students that there are BV Excel courses available for the spring, this upcoming spring. I'm really excited because our own Damian Goddett will actually be teaching one of the courses. Yeah, so Video Lab is one of the options to students across Blackstone Valley. So that'll be fun for us to participate in that way. And not just take advantage of the courses, but we are offering Manufacturing One, Manufacturing Two, two-D video game design, Video Lab and welding. So a pretty cool variety, a good variety of courses for students. So to any of our high school families that are tuning in, make sure to nudge your, your child or children in, in that direction. You can speak to any of the guidance councils about it. You can speak to Ms. Falis or me. All of us are very much involved. So let's get those seats filled. And again, no cost, extra credit for students. And the courses run either virtual or kind of a hybrid model. And so it's really cool. Kids have, students have been able to take some classes and then open up some time in their schedule for other classes that they want to take during the day and get the, get some extra credits. So really great opportunity for students. I should also mention along with this, we have opportunities for students to do job shadows. So looking at careers in these different fields, career talks with professionals. In addition, field trips. And we're looking now at some summer internships. So students that are participating in the BV Excel classes don't just get the classwork in the exposure, but they actually get all these other kind of real-world and career application pieces to it too. So we're super excited to be wrapping up this semester and starting another. Along those same lines, I just wanted to share with the committee and again, to any of our senior families or seniors that might be tuning in. We will be applying for a grant to the department, through the Department of Education that is essentially a paid internship for seniors that are in good academic standing, that are interested in possibly becoming educators or that are interested in helping out at our elementary schools. And so we're going to be launching that, assuming our grant is approved, which I have no reason to think it won't be. But we'll be able to launch that second semester. So our seniors can actually start what they normally would do that last quarter internship. They could start that early. And it will have a stipend, which is a really great opportunity. And I think the kind of the cool thing for the seniors, at least those that went through our system, will get to go back and give back to the, to the schools and classrooms that they went there. So there'll be more information to that, on that as we move forward through January, but I just wanted to share with the committee and the community, the great opportunity for our seniors there. Next, we're going to hear a brief winter sports overview from our athletic director. Robert, if you want to join us and Jesse, if you could put our athletics PowerPoint up.
Hi, Robert.
Hi, everybody. Well, yeah, I'll get started on. Well, actually, I got some good news. Basketball season actually started today. Alex Bridge Girls JV Team won thirty-seven to seventeen. Off to a good start already with one-one. So right here are the sports that we're offering or that our students are participating in this season. We have middle school basketball, boys with fifteen students, boys JV basketball with thirteen, and then varsity is carrying fifteen for boys. Girls JV has nine and girls varsity has thirteen. We're also having students co-op with both hockey programs, one in Bellingham for the boys and girls in Auburn. And we have co-opted with Hope Dale for indoor track with only three students that wanted to participate, but they're at least getting an opportunity to participate in the sport that they wanted to choose. I actually talked to the girl runner. She said she was the fastest one on team so far, so that's good too.
So just three, just three?
Yeah.
Are they all, are they, is it a co-ed team though? The boys and girls?
No, it's boys and girls. So there's one girl and the two boys. And then we have a swim with Grafton. So there's a couple of students that went up for the swim team this year in Grafton. And then the next.
There's a boys team and a girls team for swim as well.
Yes. And then this is kind of pretty much focused on our, our sports that we offer here. So basketball is one of the main sports. So it's similar to fall sports where it's a statewide tournament. These are going to be the point dates at the end of the season. Cedar Meeting will take place on February twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth. And then I just go over the dates of the preliminary rounds, round thirty-two. Hopefully we get to the state finals. So if we get to the state finals, it'll be March eighteenth and twentieth. And it's similar to fall sports where it's going to be thirty-two teams each division that will participate in the state tournament. It'll be statewide from the beginning. So I know we had schools from way out west for volleyball when our volleyball team made it to the states. So we could have, we have to, we might have to travel there or they might have to travel here. So it'll be interesting to see how our teams do and how the season turns out at the end when we hopefully get to host a state tournament game.
Do we know what division we're in?
I'll have to double-check.
That's okay. This was Karen.
We're going to be in the lower ones. I believe it's probably five or four, four or five. I don't know how many divisions are. And then it's just basically going to be the same as volleyball with volleyball being indoors. So if anybody went to volleyball game, it was probably the same atmosphere where hopefully we get a lot of fans coming out. And expectations will be that you have to wear a mask at all times. Players, coaches, referees. And as you guys mentioned earlier, the, the, the will be made on January fifteenth and no changes will be made until that day, if any. And then if there are masking policies for sporting events, it'll go by school by school. It could be a school by school decision because I know right now our building, you have to wear a mask. So if that's still the case, we have to do something. We'll have to decide if we're going to allow it for sports or it's going to be a case where we have to keep the mask on at our school or not. So if anybody has any questions. All right. Thank you.
Before sharing an overview on our next item, I do want to just open that part of the conversation with just sending heartfelt condolences to to our colleagues out in Oxford, at Oxford High School in Michigan. They've gone as, as a community have gone through a real significant situation and our thoughts and prayers are with their whole school community. And with that, I would like to just take a moment and give an update on our school safety work that we have been really focusing on frankly, for the past few years. Thanks, Jesse. So at the beginning of the school year, we started to lay out our retraining for staff and students around what is referred to as the Alice Training or the Run Hide Fight Training. And as of late, you know, many of you have probably heard a lot of conversation in the media about you know, how unfortunate that we have to do these things for our youth and we have to train teachers and students in this capacity. And I would agree wholeheartedly with that. But I will also say, while four lives were lost in the last school shooting a couple of weeks ago, which is a huge tremendous loss and tragedy, because of how the students and teachers and staff in that building responded, and that's a high school of sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred students, because of how they responded, that was over in five minutes. And I say that because a lot of preparation, unfortunately, unfortunately, had to go into making sure that the students and staff were prepared. And the school committee knows that our mantra as a team for the past four years has been, we don't panic, we just prepare. And that absolutely rings true with this level of work as well. So through the fall, we've done a significant amount of work around retraining our staff, all of our staff from food service, custodians, administrative assistants, central office, the whole leadership team, all of the teachers, paraprofessionals in new staff as well as part of our new staff orientation. Not the greatest way to end the two-day training, but a really important, a really important piece to engage him. But everybody has been retrained. In that retraining, we involve simulations. So there were actual classroom simulations with staff with our, our local police department and they have been absolutely outstanding to work with through all of this. At the end of, the end of October, we did meet with the police and had a very rich conversation about next steps. Specifically around having conversations with parents and guardians first. Doing our retraining, if you remember back in March of twenty, it was, it was kind of the last thing we did before COVID and all of that kind of let loose. But we did have a very open community conversation with families at the auditorium of the high school. And we actually did the training. We walked through the training and explained the protocols and the why. We're going to be doing that again in early January and I'll be sending dates out to the, the entire school community about this. Because we are going to be then shifting into retraining our students and doing something called tabletops, which is essentially a simulation-type activity where we will be walking calmly, but walking students and staff through a scenario with an intruder in the building. Between January and February, late February, early March, we will do a tabletop exercise at every building. And those dates will go to parents far in advance. I will say at the training we did, the last training we did with the high school students, we did have two families that dismissed their students before the training and parents have the right to do that. You know, that's, that certainly is, is up to our families. And we will send the information out far in advance. This isn't like a fire drill, you know, that there's no notice around. We will send the notification out. But I would urge our families that are tuning in to, to have their children participate in it because I do think it's very important to make sure that, you know, we don't panic, we prepare. And so I think a really important piece of this training is something we're going to be implementing in April. So sometime in March, the school district leadership team will be meeting with police, fire from both towns. We'll be meeting with DPW Leadership Town Administration. And we will be coordinating a community response drill that we will be looking at sometime in April to do at our high school. And so that's critically important because you can have whatever plans you have on paper, but until you get all the agencies around the table and you're actually able to move forward on that plan, you're not entirely sure how things will be facilitated. So I wanted to share just some high, kind of high-level overview on where we are with our school safety work. I am very proud of the work we've done in this area because if we're not safe, we can't do anything with our vestibules, our laminate over the, the glass fronts of the vestibules and the entries in our buildings, additional camera systems and other safety measures we've taken, including the human wear, right? We talk about human wear and hardware. We've worked really hard to strengthen both, to make sure that our kids and staff are safe at school every day. And so I want to just take a moment and, and update the committee on that and see if there are any questions around those plans. um, around those plans.
I, I encourage you to go forward full heart or wholeheartedly and, and do that because we all know that we can't stop it uh, until our community as a whole nationwide heals and overcomes the black mark that is attacks on schools. We're not going to stop it.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that because one of the things for our families tuning in that is really important, if you see or hear something, tell us, don't minimize it, tell us and let us look into it. I, yeah, I, that'll, the see something, say something. Mantra because I would rather it at the end of the investigation turn out to be nothing like the desk issue. If you remember at the start of the school year, you know, we searched over a thousand desktops twice going back through just to make sure. And it was, it was a hoax and it was a student that superimposed something on a desk and put it online and but I would rather that. I'll, you know, we'll check desks all night and make sure that we're safe. Um, so I don't want parents ever feel like they, you know, if they minimize it or, yeah, it's a hoax, let's not take it serious, let's not worry. Please tell us because we will absolutely investigate every, every situation. So I'm glad you said that, Tim. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. All right. Um, and, uh, the last item on my report is a overview on where we think we are going to be, uh, with our initial FY twenty-three budget priorities. And before we start, as promised, I want to share with the school committee an updated slide seven uh, to go into your packet. So this will replace the old slide seven and we appreciate, uh, your patience in that. We had to finish meeting with our class center leaders, our principals and directors and make sure that we had the priorities straight. So this you can, you can take out of the old, uh, slide seven in your slide deck and this has been.
And to be clear, it is reflected in the presentation. So anyone watching at home, you have the updated slide seven.
So we are going to jump in as we always do, uh, with our improvement strategy. And, uh, Jane, I'm glad you mentioned a bit about this earlier, uh, because it does anchor everything we do, including our budget. Um, and we are in the midst of developing a new blueprint, blueprint two point O, which we'll talk about in a minute. That will be a, uh, more kind of fine-tuned and revised version of our district improvement strategy. But for those tuning in, it's really, really important, uh, just as a reminder that everything that is in our budget is driven by this. And what's behind our district improvement strategy are our school improvement plans. And those are in fact, uh, what we use to develop the needs for our budget each year. And so when we look at, um, essentially our, our budget drivers, so what, what are kind of the high level pieces of work that are really anchoring the budget for this year? Um, and I'm not going to read all these bullet points to everyone, uh, but there are some key highlights that I do want to reference. You will notice a, uh, small shift in our student population. We're, we're down from sixteen hundred, uh, to about fifteen seventy-two. Um, exactly. Um, as I mentioned, we will have a new blueprint, uh, in place for July one. So it will be revised, uh, in new, uh, three. I'm thinking it will be a three-year plan, but we'll see, um, where that teases out. Uh, but we will have a new and updated, uh, district improvement plan. Um, our students' population, a couple of important highlights here, uh, because we have been, uh, full free lunch the past couple of years. It's hard to say exactly where our actual free and reduced lunch numbers are. But right now, our students that are classified as high needs are around fifty percent of, so that's about half of the seven, of the fifteen seventy-two, one thousand five hundred and seventy-two students. So with that, you will see an emphasis on, uh, minimizing our non-academic barriers. Um, and that very much remains a focus as we think about how do we continue to pull our community out of the pandemic, um, which I know many of us are probably a little tired of talking about and hearing about. Um, I, I know I certainly am, but it still is very much a reality. And we're seeing the impact of that. So we must, uh, give it the, the attention that it deserves. Um, you will also see an emphasis on curriculum. As you know, that's the what of our work. Um, and so looking at that mathematics curriculum that we will have the math committee in front of the school committee um, to share an update of the work in January. So we have that on the horizon and we also will be studying, uh, in the study process for social studies. We do not have a social studies curriculum. Uh, I want to be clear about that. So it's not as though we are replacing something. There is no core curriculum in place. Um, that we have homegrown, uh, units of instruction that the teachers have developed over time and resources that we've collected. And then lastly, of course, you'll see an emphasis on sustaining the work and developing the work around our careers and our pathways. And looking at a dual enrollment pipeline, you'll see particularly at the high school, um, the need for dual enrollment between um, our junior seniors and our college. And then you will hear a little bit more in January about the potential of dual enrollment on the other end, looking at the middle of the high school kind of relationship. So more to come on those pieces. But these are the main drivers behind what, uh, you will see in a few moments.
Now, so our process so far, um, you can see that first the leadership met with school committee and we agreed to a budget timeline, which was presented. Then Jason and I met with all of the principals and we asked them to identify what it is that they needed to continue the remediation work that they're doing in their schools, both for the academic and the social emotional needs. We also made sure that they were still focused on their instructional focus. Each of the buildings is doing a lot of work around their instructional focus and we want that work to continue. The principals and cost center managers then went back to their buildings and to their staff and they worked with them to identify specific needs. And they developed their budgets in order to support both their school improvement plans and the new district blueprint two point O. And then Jason and I met with principals and cost center managers to review what it is that their requests were. And as you can see by the new slide seven, that, that transpired just until, uh, today. We were meeting with people and going over what their priorities are so that we can bring them forward to the committee. So we can start with a bit of where we are. There was a lot of emphasis last year on what we needed and what we were looking to accomplish and we've done a lot so far. Um, so where do things stand right now? We have acceleration programs in place both before and after school. Each school has been running a robust response to intervention plan and that involves identifying students that are, that are lacking specific skills, studying the, the data and making sure that we're intervening just in time to make sure that those kids are catching up with the concepts that they need and making the progress that they should be making. So those kids get, uh, put into small groups. A lot of people have been speaking about that. That's where they're in some small group at one point and then they may change groups at another point. That's to go over those specific concepts that there, that there might be lacking or to advance them in. We've added our math, ELA and science interventionists. We're currently in the process of reviewing our math curriculum and we're supporting the brand-new ELA curriculum and our career pathways. We've also invested in the facilities. Uh, as Jason mentioned, we are very serious about the security of our buildings and the safety of our students. So we created new security vestibules at the complex and MES. And we added shatterproof window film to every one of the entry vestibules to make sure that they were even safer. Uh, lastly, as many people who have been paying attention to the school committee meetings know, uh, we've started repairing baseball and softball fields. Uh, there's work on the tennis courts being completely overhauled and, uh, some repairs to the track area. And all of these things should be done before the beginning of those sport seasons.
And I just want to pause here for a moment because I'd like to thank the school committee in, in the school community for getting behind this work there. There is so much work captured on this one slide and there is so much behind this that has happened. I think everyone needs to just pause for a minute and think about that. Our school system has come light years in the past few years and it's because frankly of the support, the innovation, the direction, the push of our school community. So I am incredibly grateful for that. We have done a ton of work to move our educational opportunities forward for the students that we serve and the families that we care for. So just a big shout out on that.
Agreed. And I'll give you a little aside. This past Sunday, I had the privilege of watching a BMR tennis player play a little tennis at an indoor court. And I asked her what she thought of the tennis courts getting redone. And she was like a kid in a candy store, so excited, so thrilled. And her response was, can you make sure to say thank you?
Excellent. I have a little bit more to add to that during my facilities update.
There we go. Did you want it to be purple? What? Did you want our ground to be purple? No, I didn't tell her what the color was. I didn't tell her.
That's off the table.
And so it's always important to look at to, to look at where, uh, to look at where we are and, and before looking forward to think about where we're going to go. So um, slides six and seven look at, as sometimes as we have said, like stuff and staff. So the materials and resources and the actual things that, that students and teachers need in their hands and the training that people need and then the actual, um, the different people that are doing the work. So, um, uh, slide six is a good overview that can really be captured in a few different areas. And so as you look at the different bullet points here, and I'll reference a few in a moment. Um, we're really looking at and think back to that district improvement strategy. We're looking at curriculum. We're looking at those opportunities, like whole child opportunities through career development and career opportunities for students. We're looking at whole child again, that whole child work around additional SEL resources, social emotional learning resources. I'll talk about the family resource center in just a moment. Um, and additional work around strengthening our diversity, equity, inclusion. Um, I will tell you that we meet with students all the time and that is a major focus of our student body. Uh, it doesn't seem, you know, they, they say it differently, but it doesn't really matter what group of students you're meeting with. They want more work in the area of, and, and it's, it's captured different, but what they're saying is inclusion. And they want to support each other and their peers, um, that are, you know, kind of on the margins, um, for lack of a better expression and really bring the student community together. And actually, one brilliant student I met with today, um, that is in our Blackstone Valley Leadership Program, uh, that I've been, I've been meeting with, uh, the past few weeks. We had some great conversations about what the question to me was what, what do I see the need as, uh, in this community? And I turned the question back around to the student and said, well, what do you see the need? And I will tell you, this student was spot on with their thinking. So I could not be more proud of the students that we have. It happens to be your daughter. Um, could not be more proud of Riley and, and Riley's peers that are leading so much of this good work. And I shared this PowerPoint with Riley uh, in our conversation and it took Riley about four seconds to pinpoint the diversity, equity, inclusion work. And Riley said, tell me more about this. So what does this look like? What does this sound like? Um, our kids are in tune, they're paying attention and they know what needs to be done. And then of course, some work around, uh, big work we know around facilities and grounds. Um, but one piece I do want to, I want to, um, reference, um, because it's something different. Well, different for us and that is the idea of a district family resource center. As our committee in our community know, we do have for the first time a school district social worker, uh, Sarah Rodriguez. She is doing incredible work uh, with the community, uh, particularly with our food pantries, um, right now and helping families really kind of, uh, put wraparound services in place, following up with families that are really in need and struggling, um, supporting students that have significant mental health crisis and working directly with the school-based teams and doing that and then coordinating at-home services. Um, she is all over the district. Um, but one of the things that we want to do is actually make um, Sarah more readily accessible to families. And we're looking at the concept of creating a kind of one-stop uh, opportunity for families to get the wraparound services that they might need. And so if we go back to that demographic slide in the beginning, we know that about fifty percent of our students are high needs. Um, and so that's about, you know, seven hundred unique individual students, a little bit more than that. Um, and there are families connected to those students. So we know the needs are here. I'm not going to pretend for a minute that they're not. And so what we need to do is think about how do we design a system that will support partner work with families, uh, to help kind of coordinate those services. Um, so you know, this concept of a family resource center would be a place where families could go to get some additional mental health support. They could get additional food. Uh, right now we're seeing a big need for food. We're seeing a really big need for clothing. Which is, you know, is getting colder. Um, I know that the local food pantries, uh, have been very taxed in this area because we just did a fundraiser for them. Um, so I know that there's a lot going on, uh, in those two areas and a, in an even larger need for mental health supports. Um, I will tell you that, that is almost at a frightening level in terms of just the sheer volume. And I, I know Ms. PG is here and could speak to that if you had any unique questions or specific questions about it, but um, so we need to make these services more readily accessible right now. Sarah's located in, um, central office. Um, and it's just not a easily, yeah, it's not. It's, it's not a, it's not an accessible place. It's not a, you know.
Welcoming place.
Yeah, you, you have to come every Monday morning at seven thirty, Jane. It's not a warm and fuzzy place to go. Um, so we, we need to do something different. Along with that, we are also, uh, teasing out the idea of what would a registration, family registration center look like? Um, and then, and, and the reason for that, and some folks might be wondering the why, why is that something we'd even consider? I recently had a conversation, uh, with an individual who I think she said it best. And we were talking about families registering at the school level. They go in, you talk to the administrative assistant who do a lovely job, by the way. However, the level of information that we actually need as a district in order to support and service those students correctly, we could gather that right at inception, right at registration. But what happens is the parent comes in and let's imagine that the parent only has one student they're registering, right? If they have more than one, they're at multiple schools. But if they have one student they're registering, they're explaining the history, they're going through the records. And by the way, they're doing this when the secretary is running the main office. Right? Um, and the level of information that is shared that we need to make sure we can hit the ground running with that student and that family as far as services go is significant. And our administrative assistants, while we can train them for, for that and that level of questioning, I'm not sure I want them having those conversations out in the main office area with families. Um, and we have a social worker. We have someone that can do that. We have counselors in our buildings. But what happens is the main office administrative assistant that doesn't, you know, they do their best job. They collect this information and then they refer the parent to the principal. The principal gets this information, then they refer the parent to the counselor. Now the parents on the third time have explained their situation. I think that was really well said, Amanda. I think you had shared that with me and it's there's, you know, there's a lot of information that needs to be shared so that we can make sure that we're servicing our students correctly right from the beginning and not waiting three or four weeks to figure out that all of these scenarios, uh, or situations are happening. Um, so part of that family resource center might be looking at a more centralized registration where the families can come in. We can read, they can register right there. There's counseling services on, onsite. We actually can put these students right on and do some academic assessments immediately. They can jump on one of our laptops and do a quick star assessment. We can get some information gathered. We can get all the records gathered. Then we can bundle that information and send all of the right information to the right people at the school. So the adjustment counselor gets all the socio-emotional behavioral stuff along with the principal. The main office person gets all the information they need for your typical registration. The nurse gets all of their records. We can kind of centralize some of that and then send the information out so that we don't lose that school connection either. It's not a new concept to, to, to the work. It's new to us, um, which I get because we're small. So you may, you know, we may not have always saw the need for that. But right now it's something to consider. So that would be part of that work as well. And from there. I can use this guy. Yeah, maybe my battery is dead. Let's try it. Tim, can you and Jesse move me? There you go. Thank you. Um, so from our materials and resources, we will talk a bit about the staff. So our staffing priorities for this year are somewhat unique. So our staffing priorities for this year are somewhat unique. Um, and I'll explain what I mean by that in a moment. But even looking at it visually, you can see there's some differences here. Uh, we have some more immediate needs. And then we have uh, what we're calling a kind of a projection. Um, and looking out to FY24 and FY25. Um, I think we're all hoping to get like through FY22, which is our current year. Right? But um, you know, we really took serious the charge the committee gave us around. You know, we have these positions through our ESR grants. They're going to run out. We can't just let them run out and say, okay, they're over. We need 10 positions, right? Like, we can't do that. So uh, what we did this year for our strategic staffing was to actually do it kind of in, in two bites. So the top part uh, of the slide is looking at um, positions that are unrelated to the intervention uh, and acceleration work that we've been doing with our ESR dollars. So those are unrelated positions. And so we'll talk through those briefly. Um, and I'll save the, the top one for last just because it will probably generate more um, more questions. Um, we, we may or may not uh, need a family resource center administrative assistant. I'm not even sure we'll actually need that frankly, even if we are able to move forward with that concept. Uh, but we wanted to put it out there um, as a discussion point uh, just in case. Um, we are looking to add two business teachers uh, that are really business career focused uh, to help with the pathways work that we have through the, through the middle and high school. Um, so we would ask for one at the middle school and one at the high school. Um, I will say that I have seen tremendous progress with the middle school aligning their work to the high school and really making sure that those pathways are six to 12 pathways. And getting our middle school students exposed to that career development side of the work very early, particularly around the STEM and STEAM fields, the STEAM adding that arts into it. Uh, so there are two um, additional business teachers, career teachers we're looking for there. At the middle school, we're looking for a point six history. That might seem a little random, but if you remember, right now we have a point four. Um, and so what we're looking to do is round that out so that we can actually have a history teacher on that seventh grade team. The seventh grade team does not have their own history teacher. We have eighth grade um, and sixth grade teachers that are teaching up or down to pick up extra sections uh, along with the point four. Um, so we are trying to at least round that team out and get a full team in place. By team, I mean English, math, science, and then the social studies teacher. Right now, that social studies teacher does, it exists in a point four. And then the other uh, grade levels are picking up sections. So we're trying to bring that teaming uh, model back. And we'll hear a lot more about that from Ms. Kurt at our budget workshop. Um, the building sub all requested additional permanent subs. Um, so we put just a general permanent sub. I know we had that study last year. We looked at the permanent subs versus the day-to-days. It might be worth revisiting it um, based on the new rates that we've put forward and just seeing what that ultimately shakes out to. Um, so we put that on there as well. Then the bottom tier is looking at the positions that are ESR funded. So you'll see in FY23, there are two STEM teachers that we are prioritizing for our local budget in FY23. Um, that is because, and I, I know the committee remembers this because we had a lot of conversations around this. When we redid our regional agreement, we had a lot of discussion around equity at the elementary schools, particularly around this, remember this is a STEM. The STEM work. Um, those were eliminated from initially from our budget because we could put them into our ESR grant. That grant will expire at the end of next year, but we do not want to get into a situation like we had mentioned where it's, you know, we're kind of a day late and a dollar short. The grant's running out. We didn't get it in the local. And then the STEM classes for the kids at the elementary levels are gone. And when you think about the two business career teachers at the middle high school for those path, that pathway work, those STEM teachers at the elementary school are starting that. That's where, that's where we're, we are literally fostering that um, excitement and love for, for careers and uh, study in the STEM areas. So we'd like to move those teachers from ESR two into our local budget for next year. Um, FY24, and I won't read all these to you, but these are the positions that we backed out of ESR two and they're listed. Um, and then in FY25, um, there's just a couple of positions left. We're not even sure we'll need the point five adjustment counselor at that point. But I do think we'll need the I don't know. I'm hoping. I know. Uh, but we will need the ELA interventionist. That's at the high school. Um, and then there are a couple of positions. I think there's two positions that we don't need, we're not going to need. Like we actually said that we could, we can move forward without them um, from the ESR dollars. So let me pause here because I know that was a lot to kind of talk through. But so we tried to
Go up to point number one.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Point number one.
I'm excited about that one. So.
Yeah. So, so the first bullet point references a point five leader for academic affairs and to be shared with Bellingham. Uh, public schools. One of the things that we have been looking at um, is how do we start centralizing our teaching, learning, data assessment uh, work that happens with our principals, with our instructional leadership teams, with our coaches. Right now, a lot of that work is happening with myself. It's happening with Focus Schools. It's happening with ANET. They're the group that's helping us with our curriculum development work. Um, and that's, that's good, right? That's all, that's, that's a good system to have up till this point. Um, we need to get to a place where we have somebody other than me within the system that is centralizing, organizing, and supporting that work. Um, now, what I am not asking for, I want to be clear about this. I am not asking for a full-time assistant superintendent. We have a full-time assistant superintendent. I'm not asking for a full-time director of teaching and learning. What I'm asking for is a part-time, a point five. Um, and I don't know exactly where the title would fall, but somebody to help in district, our person that, you know, lives in the space with us and works in the space with, with us to help coordinate and own that work. You'll notice that it's shared with Bellingham uh, because they too are looking for some additional support in this area. So because collectively, the two districts have about 3,600 students, uh, which is not a significant amount. Uh, we've got about 1,600. They have about 2,000. Um, and because we're, we're very aligned in the work that we're trying to do and that we are doing, we've had a lot of conversations about having a shared position. Now, they have an assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. Um, and so what they're looking for is somebody to do a lot of the work that we are doing in the schools, particularly around data cycles, coaching. And so we're looking for a shared position that will help do some of the coordination and leadership work here and some of the coordination, leadership and coaching work in Bellingham. It's kind of unique. It's, it's, it's a little bit different. Um, but um, trying to share some services so that from a cost perspective, we're also sharing that burden. And so if, we'll just use a round number. If it was a hundred thousand dollar position, BMR pays 50,000 of that. We don't have to pay the whole hundred thousand. And Bellingham pays 50,000. We've even gotten into the weeds of talking about, um, you know, not only the job description, which we have a draft. Um, but also, you know, how do we, how do we actually pay this individual? Where their benefits come from. Um, we're in a good position to do that because we are a regional school district that has our own business office. We run all of our own benefits. We can, we can do that type of work, just like we did with Bellingham in the summer. Where we actually paid all of our employees out, because remember we shared that summer program. And then we sent Bellingham a bill for $16,000 and they paid it. So um, we know they're good for it. Because we've used this model before. Um, but we're trying to share some efficiencies. I'll, I'll pause there.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll, I'll comment because um, I had heard uh, through the grapevine that, that um, a board of selectmen member from one of our communities has said, maybe it's time for the school committee to look at regionalizing with other, you know, with other school districts and, and I'll clarify that in that that's a process the towns have to undertake, not the school committee. Um, we represent this regional school district. If the towns want to look for other partners, that's something. But I think the work is better served in this format of looking for partnerships, just like the town may look for partnerships with the emergency 911 services or, you know, we, here's a service that both districts need. And here's a way to partner um, so that, that both are served, not at the expense to one nor the other. And so I love this idea. And I think the more ways, um, you know, I don't think it works for the you know, the social work office, the, the, I forget what that's called, or district resource center. I don't think it works. But I, I do think it probably would work for, it's some other things, even some counseling services or whatever. So I, I, I like this idea.
I'll follow you up on that, Jane. And I agree with you in that it's a good opportunity to share the workload in case that uh, if, if Dr. DeFalco is busy and he's got some other methods or other things that have to be done, there's someone else that can carry that workload. Um, and, and it's an easier transition to push forward from than just having one person that controls all the marbles.
So more to, more discussion to come, I'm sure on that, as we go through our budget process in January. And Matt, how about? So, hang on, did it work?
So uh, speaking of uh, our needs, we are well aware that we also have some facilities and larger needs in the district uh, from a financial perspective that we want to include in this uh, FY23 budget. As everyone at this table is aware, we do have asbestos work that has to take place at the high school during this upcoming summer, which would be uh, budgeted from FY23. The scope includes the removal and the replacement of all of the ceiling tiles in the B wing and the first floor and other associated work. And you can see the numbers that are associated with that work. I won't go into the, the details of everything that needs to be done. We also have committed, as we've discussed with the towns and we've discussed here multiple times, we've committed to funding our other post-employment benefits, uh, fondly referred to as OPEB. We, this year opened an OPEB trust fund and we are going to be funding that this year. And we'd like to make sure that it's continued throughout the remaining years. Um, so we are budgeting for that in FY23. Additionally, we have again been focusing on our safety and security. And one of the areas that we've identified that could use a bit of upgrading is our middle school. We'd like to add some additional security cameras to that area. So we've put that into the budget as well. And that brings us to our next steps. So our very next step will be presenting a draft budget at the January 13th School Committee Meeting. Um, then we'll be scheduling and holding joint meetings with all of the boards from each of the towns. Uh, those have not been scheduled yet, but we will be uh, reaching out to the towns and scheduling those. We are hoping to hold, well, we're scheduled to hold a public hearing and a vote on the budget on March 10. And then after the budget is hopefully adopted by the school committee, we'll start distributing our budget books, communicating the budget to the public, uh, a little bit more so. And we will hope to have the budget approved at each of the towns annual meetings. And then we'll start on the next budget.
Jane, would you like to, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Would you like to talk about, um, after we wrap this piece, the workshop dates?
Yes, I will. So, so as we go through the dates that are listed on this slide, we know that that requires some workshops of the school committee members where we meet with the um, the leadership team and the boss center managers. Uh, we usually have done that in three.
Yes, and I think we're doing two or three this year. We're looking at maybe condensing it to two, maybe three dates and try to do it to.
Okay. Um, so we do need to, to get out calendars and uh, take a look at um, possible meeting dates. Have you said that? I know it rang during the meeting. Y'all heard it. Uh, this is our only school committee meeting in December, but we are quickly approaching what I consider a busy season. And I don't know.
So if the next committee meeting is on the 13th.
Of January.
Yes, would it make sense to look at maybe the week of the 18th? Let's see, it's kind of skimming to see what um, folks might have available. And, and if we could, I think we could do the schools in one night. Because you'll see that having gone through, they, well, yeah, and there's not a significant ask. There are some things, but nothing
Nothing dramatic.
Too dramatic. And so we might be able to do the elementaries first and then the secondaries in the same night and then do the departments in a second. Like technology, special. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm just looking at the date. So
The Wednesday.
We usually do, and we usually do a joint um, town uh, meeting after we've met with the those groups. So we meet on the 13th. January. We meet on the 13th of January is a school committee meeting.
Yes.
So can we go three weeks in a row and go the 20th and the 20th? We meet on the 27th.
We Yes, we got to workshop. So we could, we could always
Make our workshop a workshop. So
Oh, Carrie, Carrie Purcell was coming
Oh.
To do um, the blueprint work.
Which one? The 27th?
Yes.
So that would be three weeks in a row and one of them would not be budgeted.
Right.
Can people do the 20th?
What month are we in? I'm sorry.
Was just on the board.
Oh, I know. I was, I was listening. January 20th.
So it, it literally would be three Thursdays in a row. So Thursdays in January would be shot. Time for me. I think so. So 2027, can we maybe
Or do you want to
Start earlier and have dinner?
Do you want to do, we might be able to, and I don't know what the committee's schedule is, but we might, we could probably get them done the 19th and 20th. If people were able to do like two days back to back and get the workshops, or is that too much? Too much budget?
I can't even, I can't, I could do the 18th and 20th. I can't do the 19th and 20th.
I'm on Jane's schedule.
Okay.
That week.
Okay, we could, I can't do the 18th, but
So make it 20 and
It's the 26th or Wednesday is out completely.
20th and, well, then we do 26 and 27? 24? 24, going once.
I can do 24.
Erin?
Yes, that works.
So if we do 20, 24, and 27, we good?
I think we're good. Yeah.
What 27 is a regular meeting, right?
Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. What time are we meeting? So on the 20th and the 24th, what time do you want to meet?
The earliest I can do is 5:30.
Okay. Does 5:30 let you like get into sweatpants and stuff?
No.
These are long meetings. These are comfortable meetings. These are Aaron, Aaron brings licorice meetings.
Shame the ending of that word is different.
Six o'clock. 5:45, give you time to change.
I, I could be coming in the parking lot hot, but all right. Six o'clock on the 20th and 24th.
Thank you.
And these are budget workshops?
Those are both budget workshops.
We're also six o'clock on the 27th too.
Yeah.
Right?
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
I'm sure she'll change it.
No, 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 that's 5:30. We don't need um, what for that one. We, we like Gary. We'll, we'll just use
I will. I will send invitations to everybody. Hold on.
I love a good invitation.
I will send the invitation though.
I have that. I read it in my other calendar.
I don't have Google anymore. Oh, so good for you.
But it's fine. Yeah, I can click on it.
Oh, it doesn't work, but no.
No, my work switched over to Outlook, so everything just kind of.
Yeah, I have that too, but yeah. I use my B M R and I like go to my phone. Yep.
Um, were there any initial thoughts, feedback? Again, these are kind of high-level priorities, but.
I do have something I would like to discuss for budgets. Um, I would like to discuss the idea of having a full-time athletic director. And I ask this because um I think, you know, we've had a part-time athletic director for all of our existence. Um, but currently looking at all of our sports, we have thirty sports teams that our kids can participate in. Um, and this is all managed by one person getting a fifty-eight hundred dollar stipend. Um, and currently this, you know, an A D is in the building quite a bit. Um, you know, they're required to be at all home games, required to be at indoor games. Um, there's field setup, things like that, communication, uh parent communication. Um, and I, I frankly think that, you know, we've done a lot of discussion and a lot of work on building our curriculum and the schools overall, and I feel like the piece that we're missing is building the athletics and in that case, I have to say at if you ask any of the children in the school what they look forward to, it's probably the extracurriculars that get them through the day. And I think uh we could, I think we could do more. We have schools around us that are the same size that have stronger athletic programs. Um, like Hope Dale is roughly the same size as Blackstone and most of their teams, they can field far more players. Um, I think if we had in a, a full-time athletic director, there would be um, the expectation really would be that, you know, are we introducing intramural sports between seasons to help garner some interest? There's kids that, you know, haven't yet played sports or didn't, you know, every little kid played like the biddy sports where they learn everything, but what if they want to try out for basketball, but then they get to basketball and realize they're the only ones that haven't played in ten years? Um, how do we, how do we build upon that? How do we build upon the different schools? Having them be a part of the middle school, um being a liaison to help even, for example, say basketball, running youth basketball clinics, soccer, any of those teams. Um, I think that position would be greatly needed because I feel like there are some things that fall through the cracks simply because of time constraints. Um, parent communication, I think, is always a big question, especially when it's, you know, parents that are new athletic parents. There's so many questions they have, but um having a part-time stipend position is asking a lot of somebody. Um, and I'm, and I think that if it were a full-time position, it does garner a different type of individual that can fill that position. Um, I don't know the logistics of whether they would have to be licensed as a teacher. I'm not sure you would need that. Um, but I think that if we have some more well-rounded help in that area to help grow our programs and you, you know, even to the effect of we have a lot of new coaches and who's keeping an eye on them? Who is helping some of those coaches or helping the teams manage players or understanding how to grow those programs? Um, currently, I don't think there's the time for that. But, you know, we've had some issues in the past with some coaches that have come for a season and they've gone on. Um, and it, you know, the, the idea of asking for help is it's tough because you're trying to find who coached the team last time, what questions do, you know, can you answer, what do you have time to do? And I think that, um, you know, when we look at the amount of students we have in our school system, we have a lot of kids that are athletes, but they're dropping off and we need to be able to get them engaged and back in school and, and back in these programs and as we are expanding our offerings and courses, having a higher level in athletics helps draw more of those kids back to our district. There was a time and we had a lot of kids that would choice in to be part of our athletic programs and I think through the years that has dwindled a bit.
I'm not sure how to end that. So we're talking budget priorities and that's a priority. So, yeah. Fair enough. Anyone else have feedback on the budget priority?
All right, uh, that concludes my report. And I will begin my reports.
You were first last time.
I'm a basket in the glory of the last meeting.
I did, no.
That's right, I wasn't there. Well, thank you for you. Thank you. Uh, well, uh, good news is, uh, the financial reports this evening are relatively uneventful, which is a positive thing. So I will go through the revenue and expenditure together and then uh open if there are any questions. If you look at the revenue reports, everything is running smoothly. We are collecting what we are expecting to collect. The only thing that may stand out is the S R three that still uh money has not been collected. We were recently approved for that grant. I was able to put the first if um drawdown at the end of November, so we should be seeing that distribution come out soon. So for the next before, we should start seeing revenues coming from S R three, but otherwise everything is as expected. On the general fund expenditures, everything again has been going according to plan and there's nothing that is unexpected with regards to the expenditures. The one thing that I would point out as being new, uh this report is a good thing. Uh, while you will see in the thirty-two hundreds if on the front side of the, of the paper, that's our medical and health services. It looks as if we're uh going to be running a thirty-four thousand dollar uh deficit. We actually uh were just notified that we're going to be receiving a hundred thousand dollar grant for our health services. So that will more than cover um that red mark in the general. So everything should be good. Yes, that will be giving us, yep, additional he- health services support in the nursing area. Otherwise, uh, everything is balanced. And again, our out-of-district tuition on the general revenue side, on the general expenditure side shows a bit in the negative, but if we go to the um grant fund expenditure review on the next page, our fund twenty-eight circuit breaker will more than cover that uh that red in the general fund. Are there any questions about?
Oh, yes. My, my highlighter ran dry. Now, forgive me for asking because I'm, I'm just a, a country boy with some big city ideas, but I'm looking at the current, current available balance and I see red all over the uh general fund expenditure review. And I, I start in the fourteen hundreds and I go down the page and I get down the guidance at twenty-seven-ten. And there's a sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand dollar deficit. And then the medical and health services, I know we hired the new nurse and that, that's taken us out there. Uh, I turned the page over and then under custodial services, we're forty-four thousand dollars in the red. Uh, moving down the page and I'm only hitting the highlights here, networking and telecom at fifty-six thousand. Uh, benefits and insurance at twenty-eight thousand. And then we get down to line item ninety-three hundred where we're three hundred and forty thousand dollars in the red. Help me understand that, Matt.
Absolutely. So if a lot of times money is budgeted in uh certain lines and ends up being expended from other lines that are in the associated function code. So that's why if you look at the summary on the bottom of the, the totals in those various function codes, that's a much better indicator of where things stand. So to your point, um, a, a perfect example is that forty-four hundred in networking and telecom. What you're seeing is the red, but there's a lot of other places if you notice that there's black. There's a lot of funds that are in the black, or I should say accounts that are in the black. So that forty-four hundred uh networking and telecom, if you look at the front side and look at our fourteen fifty, which is information management, that, that's a combination of where our um our consulting services was budgeted from and where it's been getting taken from. So that the black, that's information management, that's seventy thousand nine oh four will more than offset what may have been budgeted um or being spent and not budgeted from the forty-four hundred and then in the networking and telecom.
Okay, well, let me borrow a line from former president uh G W Bush. This is fuzzy math.
No, it, it's not fuzzy math.
Because.
What ends up happening, what ends up happening, and this is uh unfortunately a, a circumstance of how we have to go through the budget. Once the budget is set and we've approved the budget in the, in the function codes that is, that they're in, I can't move them. So I can't then say, well, actually, we didn't, you know, we didn't really budget the seventy-eight thousand in networking and telecom. There's another seventy thousand dollars in there. So with certain, if certain expenses are getting charged to that line, we can adjust that, the expenses later on, and I could definitely work to do that um uh as we come into the halfway point and see if I can adjust some of those charges to level out some of the blacks and the reds, but I can't move anything that we say is budgeted. So that's where, that's where that happens. And again, to your point, the ninety-three hundred um, that is a large red number. However, our, our um special education programs, where kids go varies. So it could be that it was originally budgeted in the collaboratives, but then they went to a, a non-public day, you know, full day program that wasn't the collaborative that we had no, we had no control over. So that's where you'll see the ninety-four hundred has a surplus of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, whereas the ninety-three hundred is, is showing that large red number. And again, uh, those, those are also offset by the circuit breaker fund in special education, which is on the grant expenditure review, which is uh fund code twenty. And you'll see that that has a, a surplus showing a, in, you know, an estimated surplus of two hundred and six thousand. So when you're looking at our out-of-district placements as a whole, even though that one spot in the ninety-three hundred shows red significantly, we're actually in a, in a decent spot where we're not over, we're not overspending in, in that area.
So how do we get to a point to where we don't have all this red in the current available balance in the future budgets?
Well, I, as I said, I can um, I can go back and also try to, or arrange or investigate exactly um whether or not I can move some of those expenditures that are showing in certain functions to another function code that they may have been budgeted in. So uh again, sometimes our salary lines are set, Monique runs payroll.
Yes.
And it could be very well that there's, you know, one fun, there's one account code that's charging a guidance counselor to someplace else and I, I have to get into the weeds very far to try to make sure that every, every line is exactly as we planned. Um, which is that it's not a bad exercise. It's definitely something that I can do. And but as I said, one of the things that I try to do is look at the, the totals. That's why I put the summary on. We added that recently. Um, actually just before you had joined the committee because there was a lot of reds and blacks, but if you look, they're all within that, many of them are within the same general function code. So when you look at the summaries, it shows that we're not really having a problem in that area. It may just be whether it was coded as, you know, networking, telecom or computer supplies or something to that extent. But, but to your point, I will try to look into some of the expenditures and see if I can reclassify them.
Uh, I'd, I'd like to see the, of, of future expenditure review with less red on it so that we have an idea that we're uh looking at this at first glance, we come down, we look at the bottom line at the totals, we see that we're solvent. But what I'm hearing you say, even though you're explaining it very well, is we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul to make some of these balance out. And.
I'm not saying that we're robbing anyone to pay anybody. I'm saying that when we budgeted, we budgeted to have certain expenses come from some specific account number.
Yes.
And it's very possible that some of those expenses are coming from a different account number and we just would need to adjust the expenses where they're being charged.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, next you will see the personnel update, which is simply for review. If anyone has any questions on that, you can reach out to myself or to Monique in our tail office. And that brings us to the facilities update. My favorite part. It's everyone's favorite part. Uh, currently, the baseball and softball dugout roof kits, they arrived and they're going to be getting installed soon. Uh, Scott has been working on that. Scott also made sure that we properly shut down the irrigation system out there, so the water lines were blown out in preparation for the winter. Speaking of tennis earlier, Jane, our work did begin and uh as you can see on this project update, it says that the completion depends on the weather, but we're definitely anticipating it before the season. I was just updated today that if we do continue to have some warm weather, uh, which we are anticipating in the upcoming days, the tennis courts may be finished next week.
Wow.
And then that young lady, I believe, that you were speaking to, she can come over and play on our court.
No, because the nets will be down.
Oh, true. That's.
Come on, Matt, we gotta protect the investment.
That's true. I apologize. Uh, uh, the safety laminate, we've been having a bit of an issue with the uh, with one of the doors. Yeah, there's a bubble, there's an air bubble in the one at uh, the apartment at middle school here and we're just working with the company so that they're going to come and repair that. It's all under warranty. They haven't even finished doing the work, so it shouldn't be a problem. And with respect to track and field, we got new shot put and discus cages that have arrived and they are going to be installed soon. Uh, Scott and our groundskeeper were working on removing some of the old fencing and, and footings and again, we're hoping to make sure that we have all of that in place for the upcoming season.
We have requests.
Just, all right. Uh, the town of Millville is looking to just get approval for their.
Their second.
Yes.
Doesn't know, they canceled the first COVID concern. And they'll, they'll relook at numbers closer to the fifth, but they would like the.
It is January fifth, yes.
Change of motion to approve very well.
My second.
Second by them. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposition, extension.
Add it to our new facilities calendar.
All right.
Did everybody get that?
Yeah.
Did anybody go into it?
I just looked at six clicks and see that it went out, but I didn't read it.
There were so many levels, I had to request permission to access.
So I did too, but it's because I was in the wrong account. I was in my B M R account. So as soon as I was in my B M R.
It should have been wide open.
Yeah, okay.
Right. The issue is when you, you know, when multiple, we have multiple emails on our phone. We'll click on something and if I log in as Tammy Lemieux Cumberland, then it asks me to request access to everything, but if I log in as Tammy Lemieux B M R S D, then it's smooth sailing. So that's what happens. We're just.
Same thing here tonight.
Our technology is over.
I had to be.
Overloaded.
Did that structure work location?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And there was a couple of how-to guides that went out.
No, the best one, like four. Here you go, but it, here you go, but you're going to get something later. Here you go, but look for the next message to come. But I appreciate the work that, that everybody did to do that. Cause I think if people actually start using that, we might get something that Erin requested about eight years ago.
We're all looking at you, Erin.
Uh, one other thing real quick, and I, I know you haven't opened it up, so I'll just be quiet.
No, go ahead.
We were talking about, uh, registration and having a centralized place for that in the, in the District Family Resources Center. Uh, we had talked before about having all the forms for the beginning of the school year online. Have we made progress with that? And can we move the physical part of filling out the forms to an online form? And then have the district resource office check and make appointments for those families to come in? Or just have it both ways so families don't have to come in immediately with all their family. They can come in at an appointment time and then check off the, the boxes so that they can get the resources.
So after the meeting, we had that conversation, we did do a follow-up with our team. And, um, we actually, I know Matt had a conversation with Dan, our tech, um, lead about putting all of that, like making all that electronic. So I do believe that's under, actually, that's underway.
Yeah, uh, we, we started with our H R processes, um, to try to get everything online and in, um, electronic P D Fs that can be completed.
With the fillable P D F.
The fillable P D Fs. And, um, I think once we, once we finalize that process, which we're, we just finished. And now we're going to be doing some training with the, with the staff on how to implement it. Then we can start moving into the possibility of all of the, um. Um, registration paperwork to take a look at it.
We're, we're still within the age, we were at, with the point with our H R where it was the paper packet goes to like four hundred people. So that's like those days are done and everything is electronic, which is great, but it's teaching the whole. So we definitely have that. Yeah, that's right. Training on that.
Any, anyone else have any other school committee issues they'd like to bring forward or comments to make? Wishing everyone a happy holidays. We don't have another meeting till January. Good luck with exams. I don't know, did that happen? I don't know anymore. Or your projects that are due?
Um, I do want to add that the seniors are, a lot of students are starting to get all of their college acceptances in. And I'm told if you go in the A wing of the high school, I believe, is a bulletin board where everybody's posted that's gotten college acceptances. And I've heard some of the students like, well, you know, the students don't walk by it that much, so you have to like go out of your way and. You know, they all want to be heard. So if you happen to be at the building, go take a look. There's lots of students that are, that have their sights set on many different postgraduate. I think we just had a student that.
Yes.
Yeah, it's right by that. Maybe it's worth moving to like the cap or a more common area.
Can that be posted online?
I think last, I last year, I thought the school counselors, uh, tweeted out.
I think they did like the picture of the person and where they, and where they were going.
On Instagram too, I think. I feel like I was getting them electronically somehow.
There's a lot going up. I know we have student that, uh, just signed on with the Navy yesterday as well, so. A lot of exciting things happening.
Right?
Very strange.
It's very bizarre.
Just Jane and I on this. It's really weird.
You move. It, it's a significant delay.
Yeah.
Um. Anyone else? All right, uh, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session to adjourn from executive session and not return to the public meeting.
I so move.
Move by Tim. Is there a second? Second by Amanda Roll Call. Sarah?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Me, yes. Erin, I don't, how do we do this?
Am I coming? Uh, you can.
I can call you, Erin.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, you're coming.
Okay. The cell phone. All right. So, so, so whatever.